Good evening. It's being September 16th, 2021. This is the Acushnet Playing Board. Is there a motion to open the meeting?
I make a motion to open the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With that, what else? I don't need anything. We had, uh, gonna give us a moment of silence. We lost Phil Mello, who was one of our board members for the last almost 10 years. He passed away unexpectedly on August 29th, 2021. We just want to say thank you to him. God bless you, Phil. You're up in the big Holly Davis in Sky. We loved his Holly. We love them. We miss them. I just want to give him a quick moment of silence. Thank you, Phil. We're gonna miss you. With that, would you be kind enough to introduce yourself, starting from Brian?
Brian Dishaps.
Doug Comontal, Town Planner.
Rick Ellis, member.
Mark Centerizio. With that, on the old business site plan review for 540, uh, Main Street. That's our first thing, Doug, correct?
Yep. Uh, so the plans are already approved. Uh, certificate of action was already issued. The plans just never got signed when they were approved.
I gotta check and see if anybody's here for that one?
Uh, I don't think anybody will be here for it, but...
Okay. Anybody for 540 Main, 540 R Main Street? So with that, do we have to make a motion to sign it, or we already made the motion? We just have to sign it?
Uh, I'd make the motion, just to...
Is there a motion for ground-mounted array 540 Main Street? TJA Clean Energy applicant, represented by LA Design, NEU Sandwich, Mass.
I would make a motion that we sign completed plans for 540 R Main Street sole project, as it has complied with all of their requirements.
I second that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. We're gonna have to have a roll call on this now, right? You just sign these?
Yeah, just sign it.
Is there a mila, or just a set of plans?
Just a set of plans.
Okay. With that, pass that to Brian. We'll go from there. The next one, next one is documents for Gammons and Mattapoisson Road. Certificate of Action, Certificate of Approval, and Approval With Conditions Required. BMC Mill Pond Blue Wave Solo. Will those, just to sign those documents also?
Yes. So I have three here to be signed by the board. Uh, this is a matter I had asked to go speak to town council about. They came back with language. Um, I felt it was appropriate. Item number four, and then 7A.
I'm gonna try to remember what we were unhappy with.
They, they just had it there. Uh, lawyers produced some, some language, and then I spoke with them.
They only wanted 7A?
Uh, they wanted to, well, originally they wanted to fight 7A, and then, uh, item number four. And then, after speaking with town council, I got, they were good with what town council had to say. I felt it was good, and this is the final product.
A lot of pages here, Brian?
Yeah, there's, uh, actually there's 12, won't be long. My hand dyes up the floor.
You know, brother.
If this is, uh, I'm trying to combine things here now. This, this thing that the building commissioner is not happy with, that the project's not complete, and they wanted to sign off on it, I can't say...
That's not, that's, that's separate project.
No, I know, but I'm, I'm, if the conditions are the same, why can't he just issue a cease and desist?
That's right.
I mean, if the things aren't in compliance with the plans, I mean...
I understand completely. They don't want to do anything, right? Except you guys went out and visited.
Yeah, I went out with Jim. Uh, I mean, like, that's, that'll be on the last for the discussion. They have three people here for it.
Which one is this now?
The, uh, the one that, uh, Rick's talking about is for Zero and 88 Wing Lane. And Jim and I feel like they're not in compliance with what they have displayed on the site plan. The visual barrier isn't there. It looks very unfinished. Like, the solar, the solar array itself is complete. Surrounding the site isn't complete. They have their own issues they have to go through with Pat. I have a list of the issues Pat has stated.
Oh, we'll wait till then.
Yep.
Are you okay with that one from Gammons and Mattapoisson Road?
Yeah, yeah, to me, that's fine.
So is there, we have to make a motion to sign that one from Gammons and Mattapoisson Road? With that correction on number four?
Revised by town council, okay. I would make a motion that we sign the certificate of action for Gammons Road, uh, as modified and recommended by town council for condition four and condition 7A.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
I'll start them all, start them all up here.
Yep. These are just your signature.
These, okay.
Nope, it's just the one page.
Okay.
Yep. I just have three of them for it to be signed.
Sounds like the troops are getting rowdy out there, huh?
Yeah. So is David joining us next month?
Not till next month, because he has that, did you get it back at...
Yeah, I did.
301 Perry Hill?
Yep.
It depends on how long we string him along on the project.
You're such a nice guy.
Well, you know, somebody gets elected, and then they don't show up for months. I mean, why should we do anything for him, right?
And speaking of that, while we have a lull in action, since, uh, Brother Phil passed away, if there's anybody out there in TV land that would like to take the position on the planning board, please send your application into the selectmen that you would like to be part of. And we could show you somebody that probably put it, advertise it in the paper, et cetera, et cetera. But we have many Acushnet residents out there, and if you'd like to, please feel free and come in. We'd be more than happy to, uh, talk to you. Thank you. The next one is Drummond Drive. We don't have to have anybody, let me check a seat.
Nope, same situation.
Can we hold off on that till the end?
Yeah.
Okay. Who do we have coming in discussion for ground-mounted 550? Are they here?
Uh, they should be, yes.
Okay, so that's the first one I want to bring in?
Uh, yes.
We'll bring that one from Peckham Road at the end, okay?
Oh, that, that's just, uh, signing paperwork, yeah.
We'll get these people. We're getting a little more audio. So this is 330 and 550 Main, right?
Is that what this is?
330 and 550 Main, correct.
No, not the one you're signing now. That one's Mattapoisson Road. Okay, gang, we got 330 and 550 Main Street. Anybody here for that? Come on down.
You would pick...
What did I do with it? I printed it. They called me through an engineer.
What we doing? Come on in.
How you doing, gentlemen?
Introduce yourself, who we are. You want to put stuff on the plans here?
Do you want to show me the plan?
No, you can. I'm Greg Carey. I'm with, uh, Con Edson, with the developer of both, uh, projects that you approved. Uh, one at 355 Main Street, which we've got a special permit for, and the other 5, 5, uh, 50 Main Streets.
It's just three of these?
Yes, yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
We did them.
Doing all that, just, uh, all the approval. I can date them right now, it's fine.
So basically, what we're, um, what we're here for is the, the project on 550 Main Street was originally approved as a 2-megawatt array. Um, but due to, uh, issues with the, uh, the interconnection, we did get approved for a reduction in the size to a 1-megawatt project. Um, and the, the discussion tonight is with regards to the, the cash charity that we, we need to post for the, for the 2-megawatt project. For the decommissioning. Um, the cost was set at, um, what was it? Eighty-seven thousand?
Eighty-seven thousand.
For, for the 2-megawatt project. Um, 355 Main Street's a 1-megawatt project, and that was set at 54,000. We're just looking for, well, 54 and some change.
Fifty-four, seven fifty.
Yeah. Um, a reduction in the required charity for this one, since we're only building 1-megawatt instead of two.
Is this the one at 550?
This is the one at 550.
Is the disturbed area about the same?
Yeah, it has 5, has 355, yeah, yeah. It's small. It's smaller. I can show you from what we had approved. Um, this was the previously approved fence line, and this is the, the current fence line, and we've also pulled in the, uh, the limits of clearing as well. This plan now, right here, this was the, this was the previous approved fence.
Okay.
This is a limit of clearing now, right?
Yeah.
Um, for the, for the revised project.
So it is small. It will be a smaller project.
How much, how much smaller is the disturbed area? Um, like, maybe it's probably 80 or 90% of what it was before.
It's, um, it went from eight, the, the fenced area, we'll stick with that, was, um, was 12 and a half, um, just over 12 and a half acres, and it went down to, um, just under nine acres. So it's like a 75%.
Okay.
Smaller size.
The entry road's about the same.
Correct.
So what you're asking us is you want to lower the decommissioning. Everything else is fine except for that, correct?
Correct. We are just looking to, to be consistent with the other 1-megawatt project.
So we have to figure this out, and with a calculator, or...
We have a calculator?
Uh, no, no, I do not have my phone. Here.
Yeah, just what's, what's 75% of the previously approved?
Uh, what was, uh, previous 12, 12 acres or something?
75% of, well, of the, the...
Of the decommissioning cost, yeah.
Oh. Seventy, what's, what's the...
Seventy-five percent of 87,000.
Was that on both, or...
Sixty-five thousand, two fifty.
Was the 2-megawatt.
Yep.
The 1-megawatt was 54.
This one's 550 Main, right?
Correct, yeah. We're not trying to change anything on the other one.
330's staying the same, since we're just talking 550?
I mean, 75% of what was previously approved is 65,250.
What'd you come up with?
Well, we were just trying to be consistent with the other 1-megawatt project, which was, was 55,000, or 54,750. Yep.
Right. What was approved by the planning board for 550 was a 2-megawatt project.
I understand.
And now we're gonna build 1-megawatt.
I mean, most of the decommissioning is really involved in, in...
Restoring it back to the natural...
Restoring the place back to its, restoring the site back to the way it was, or not just raped land. Uh, I mean, you're, you're, you're about 75% of what you were before. It seems like that's what the, uh, what the number should be. 65,000, which is 200 and whatever, which is 75% of what your previous area was.
Rich, do you remember, uh, what the size of 355 Main Street?
Well, I'm just going by this one. You had an approved number for this one of 87,000 something.
Yep.
You're reducing the land area, or reducing the disturbed area by, generously. It's probably not quite 70.
Yeah, it's 69.70%.
You've still got the, you've still got the road.
Yeah.
Which is the same for both of them, so it's not like the whole project is getting, getting reduced. I mean, I would be, I would be happy with the 65,250 dollar number. Again, 75% of what you had before.
Let's run, let's just run the exact, 8.85 divided by 12.63 is 70% times 57, times 87. Eighty-seven thousand.
Plus the road is the same, so it's actually more, it's actually more than that. I mean, this is, this is exactly the same as it was. That, this isn't, this isn't reduced by, by...
And just so you know, this is an existing driveway we're using. We're not, we're not building a new driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's 61 now.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, I would be satisfied with 65,250 myself. I mean, again, uh, without getting into having another, having an engineer look at it and go through it in detail, I don't, I don't know that that's really necessary.
Yep.
Um, I mean, you save the cost of the engineering review that way, so it's kind of, it's kind of, it's kind of a wash, you know?
There's no need to.
And lose another month or two, at least to get it in place.
Or more. I mean, we've had trouble getting people to respond to our requests for work.
Oh, yes. Yeah, we're looking into another, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Peer review service? Peer review person, another company, because we've just had so many solar arrays and everything. So if you agree upon 65 grand?
65,250. I would make a motion.
You wanna make it even? Is that okay?
No, I'll make it, uh, 65,250 is a good...
I'll try to save you 250, that's all.
I mean, we're, to get, I mean, if you look at it in a, uh, not in today's dollars, but 20 years out, if this thing, it gets abandoned because nobody's making any money after it anymore. I mean, it probably should be prorated to, you know, the costs or the value of money 20 years out. So this is really a bargain, as far as I'm concerned, even at 87. I would make a motion that we approve a reduction to 65,250 dollars.
I second that.
Discussion, you guys okay with it?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous with that?
All right.
The decommissioning rate will be 65,250.
We'll do a revised, uh, uh, you know, that agreement we had to get done before with the signatures and stuff?
Yep. I'll draft that up and have it ready for next meeting.
Put that figure in there. Take the 87 out, put the 65,250 on.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Sounds good, thank you.
Appreciate your time.
On another matter, did you, um, sign the Blue Wave, uh...
We just signed...
We signed a couple of things.
Yeah, for, um, Gammons Road.
Yes, I did.
Okay, great.
I have that right here.
All right, so you're gonna do what, you're gonna file that with the town clerk?
Yeah, once it gets filed with her, you go, uh...
We'll get it, Doc.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Have a good one. Have a good night. I can go get the next one. Deep Brook Estates.
Yep. Zed, Margaret?
Yep.
Oh, that's what everybody's here about.
What's that?
Deep Brook.
Deep Brook?
What's this about, Deep Brook Estates?
Uh, it was kinda hard. Uh, she'll probably explain.
What's that?
You don't wanna know.
You don't wanna know what?
Deep Brook.
Oh. Hi, is, is this the subdivision?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's the skateboard.
Plus, I, I did not vote on that, so, well, you only got two members here. That's a problem.
Well, we're, you, we're just gonna discuss some...
You can figure it out.
Correct, Margaret?
Well, this, uh...
You're gonna discuss, you want?
Discuss it, in, in any event.
That's fine.
And then, uh, I don't know when your next meeting is, but, all right.
Introduce yourself for our wonderful camera here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Margaret Ishihara. I represent Michael and John Cosco with regard to Deep Brook Estates subdivision. So this is...
Now, is this, all the litigation done with this, Margaret?
Well, that's what we hope to accomplish, but we need, we have one piece regarding the, uh, the utility, the, uh, utility easement. So, um, this is a plan that the board approved back in December of 2017.
Oh, it's charming, though. John is 96 years old. I talked to Mike today, and John is losing it quickly. I probably won't even be around at 96.
A little pessimistic.
Oh, I don't know. 96, that's, that's, that's pretty well up there.
Pushing the limit!
So, um, um, the definitive subdivision plan gets approved. Just the lotting sheets, as you know, get recorded, so just sheet one and two showing the, the actual layout. Um, the rest of them sheets run through, the rest of the sheets that are not the lotting sheets.
You can speak up just a little bit more, or if you're gonna take your mask off, if you don't mind.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They're actually not recorded, but they're all signed by the planning board. So the, um, in the area of the, um, what I think of as the power grid easement, this is where the high-tension lines come through. Um, originally, when it was approved, there was a request for waiver to do, uh, overhead utilities, which are, um, uh, I don't wanna say deviation, but your, your planning board rules and regulations, um, call up for underground utilities. So this area here was shown as, um, overhead, going through the 210-foot power grid easement. And, um, at this point, we want to do this as underground utilities. So, um, I have, we have before Eversource a request to get a license for approval, which we would have to have gotten anyways, to do work here as underground, an underground service for the subdivision.
Those are going under the utility lines, correct?
Well, it's going underground, underground. Yeah, because the utility lines evidently, um, are, in the, in the world of utility lines, are relatively low, so in order to go overhead, you now have to raise their utility lines. And underground, you know, probably works better anyways. Um, so I apologize. When I started to look at this, I realized that I need a magnifying glass to look at it. So I have a magnifying glass with me. I do with them. Um...
What is it that you're exactly looking for, Margaret? What can we do if...
So what I'm looking for is...
Did they settle this in court between the two people?
No, we're trying, we're trying to. It's not.
Okay, so what is it that you're looking for?
I'm looking for an approval, this is the, um, proposed letter, for us to, um, do underground utilities, but without having to come back and do a, um, a modification to the sheet, sheet eight, since it wasn't recorded. This is, um, this is my proposal. So the status right now of Eversource is, we applied to get a license for them for the underground utilities, and we anticipate getting that soon, but they have a lot of requests, and they, there are some people ahead of us, but I'm not anticipating any problems with that. The, um, the engineer, Ron Legere, who's been working on this, is okay with it, but the way Eversource seems to work, they have more than one approval that's needed.
We understand.
Yeah, I think that's what we're waiting for at this point.
Our biggest challenge tonight is gonna be because we only have two members here.
Yeah.
Rick abstained, and Phil Mello passed away.
Oh, no.
Yes, on August 29th.
Unexpectedly, yeah.
Unexpectedly. He was younger than all of us and stronger, so what our challenge with that is, even though we can vote on it, Rick abstained from this.
Yeah.
Okay, so you only have two. I'm sure we'll agree upon this, but there's nothing we can do tonight, Margaret.
Oh, boy.
Well, let me sort this out, Mark. I mean, I mean, you really, you already, you already gave him a waiver to do the overhead. He just wants to do underground in that section. Right. With waiver required. Um, I certainly, if it would help them out, I certainly would be willing to sign it if you think that that's good enough to get you through the process.
Is that okay with you, Margaret?
Yeah, I, I, that's up to you, as to whether you want to participate or not.
How you do...
I don't think we had, frankly, I don't...
Let John and Mike know that I tried to help them out. That's all I...
I shall. Because my recollection is, I don't think we had requested that you, so it wasn't coming from our end. I think you...
It was from Rick's end.
No, I, I, there's some history between parties, and I just didn't wanna be seen as obstructing their, uh, ability to do the subdivision.
Yeah.
And, and likewise, I didn't want to put myself in a position where, you know, I, I didn't wanna say anything. Well, that's not what I'm supposed to do as a member, so... The easiest way was just to abstain. I certainly wouldn't mind, you know, participating in signing whatever document you need to sign to get that section of the utilities underground.
Yeah.
If, if you think that that's gonna...
Doug, have you got an opportunity to read this?
It's the first time I'm seeing it.
You should read it and take a quick look at it, if that's okay.
Yeah, no, I've been...
I mean, obviously, Eversource does not want overhead lines that close to their transmission lines. You know, so I mean, that, that's really, that's really, it's really just a practical concern from Eversource, which nobody was aware of when the thing was signed. And it's not, they're not asking really for another waiver. It's just a slight change in one section. That will actually put it more in compliance with the rules of regulations.
Well, I was just gonna say that, it's sort of a reverse thing. If we needed a waiver to go with overhead, we would not have if we had originally been in an underground and...
Brian, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Doug, how do you feel?
I'm comfortable with it, yeah.
Okay, is the language okay?
Uh, what I've read, what I've read, it sounds pretty good.
And I mean, like they said, they got a waiver to do that, so...
Yeah, exactly.
Really, we're just going back to what it should have been.
The underground just...
Get-go, so we're all good.
Yeah, and in any case, I don't, I don't think that the planning board is really in a position that they should be asking a proponent to do something that is gonna be a safety problem.
Exactly.
You know, for, for electrical transmission. So I mean, it, it's kind of a moot point.
Yeah, and your plan actually does say something about coordinate with local utility. I think you've always kind of anticipated that, uh, we can approve what we can approve, but you know what? Eversource, Eversource...
Does whatever they want.
Yeah, well, I don't know if they do whatever they want, but they're gonna...
Pretty, pretty much. Well, they don't move until they feel that they are forced to move.
Yeah.
After money.
Okay.
It costs them more money to go underground, so they're, they're not gonna do an extra... If, if John's involved, there won't be an extra two feet of underground done.
Thought you were gonna be go back and say that, that's how you say...
My father and John were from the same era, and that's depression era, and none of them do an inch more or a dollar more than they have to. It's just a, it's a generational thing.
I, well, I think so.
It's not a personal thing. It's a generational thing.
You know, throwing away money.
Is there a motion? I think you're gonna make the motion.
Yeah, you make the motion.
Yeah, I make a motion to accept the proposal to go from overhead to underground utilities at, uh, Deep Brook Estates.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, helpful? With that, we'll sign these. Now, do you have anything else, Margaret, you'd like to talk to us about?
Yeah, the one that has the plan attached is the one I wanted to, to get, get signed.
Okay, is that, so is this one? This one right here?
Yeah.
Uh, do you have a copy of that plan, too?
Yes, I do. I have a bunch of copies.
Is that this one right here?
Yeah.
This is the show I have on file.
There's one for you. This one's for you. As I said, when I looked at it, I said, talk to him and say...
Today's the 16th.
Yes.
Nine, six, ten, twenty-one. And the second thing you'd like to talk about?
The second thing I'd like to talk about is, my understanding is, and I was not working on this at the time, that there had been a cash bond, which I think was actually checked, but it's not. in the town, from Mr. Costa, for, I believe the amount was about $23,000. And I don't know if that, um, was a security for the work, or if it was for, um, what do they call the, um...
Well, what it is, is on a subdivision, we have X amount of dollars per feet, linear feet of a roadway. And I presume we must have put X amount of dollars up for the roadway, and this is the remaining amount of money left in it, but I don't believe they release it until the road is done.
It's concluded. That enables us to hire, to get engineering services to inspect the road and determine if the materials that used in the construction of the road were the correct ones. So, we still have op... we will still have monetary obligations until this road is completed.
So, the question that I had then is, our, our plan is to sell this as one subdivision and not actually, um, uh, do the construction ourselves, right, at this point? And so, if that happens, then, um...
I think that this would... and I'm not a lawyer, and Rick could go with... Until this road is done, whoever buys it will have to take that portion of the money and give it to the Costcos. Because without completing the road, I don't believe we can release the monies for it.
Oh, okay.
I will have to double check them.
Yeah, it really, it really doesn't matter to us who, who builds it or who owns it. It's really just a matter of, of being able to hire engineering services to check that the road construction is proper.
Doug, do you want to make a couple of questions?
I mean, whether, whether John wants to get, you know, $23,000 bucks back from the seller, reduce the price of the thing by $23,000, you know, or whatever, then there still has to be a $23,000 amount that the town has in escrow, or $23,000 minus whatever has been used of it so far for engineering.
Yeah, and that sort of went off my radar, but that was one of the things.
I think that was the remainder. They had put X amount of dollars up, and this is what remains in the escrow account. I believe that's what, how it works.
Yeah, I think some of it was probably used for engineering review, I think.
Could have been.
You know, I think that's what it is. So, um, okay. Is there something that you need to check that might change that or check with?
Uh, let's let Doug come back, and he, he can check with finance, but I believe that's part of the rules and regulations.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's got to be, that's got to be in place, so that the road can be inspected when it's constructed. You know, whatever John, whatever deal he's got to make with the potential purchase...
This is still in litigation, correct? So, it's, it depends on who develops it, where, and why. I think whoever goes to buy it will have this as part of the deal, that they give this amount of money to the Costcos.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, I'm, just for the sake of argument, I don't know what the exact number is, but it may mean that John's entitled to his, his purchase price plus $23,000.
Right, because he's leaving it on the table.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, because otherwise, it gets difficult to coordinate, all right?
Because it's still in litigation, Margaret. If it wasn't in litigation, and there was a finalization, and Mr. A bought it for Mr. B, and they reconciled this price, and put it on there correctly, then it would be fine. But until that happens, there's still a litigation. I just figured you would want a copy of that, Doug?
Yes, absolutely.
And Margaret would want a copy of that?
Yes, please, yeah.
Would you like the original, or?
Oh, I'd like, yeah, I think I get the original.
That is...
That's the same thing. You're just going to sign one for us.
I just want a copy for...
Well, we're going to sign an original.
Yeah, so you have something on your one, yeah, in your folder. Well, all right, so that was a little different information than I got. I was thinking that once the conveyance appears, that, um, the money wouldn't be in there. All right, um...
I don't want to throw you off, but you're a bunch of people.
I don't want to throw you off, but I am. Thank, thank you very much, Sean.
You're welcome.
Next one, 0188 Wing Lane.
Yes, sir.
I think, I, I'm 68 now. I think when I was in high school, John was working on the first part of Deep Brook Estates.
It might be downstairs.
Here we are now, right?
Yeah.
I didn't realize how extensive it was, because I've only, I've only known this piece.
It's a huge piece of land. As a matter of fact, I remember John was telling my, my father's story about when he was doing the construction, because John, he physically was out there with the machine, digging trenches and moving dirt. Well, he went out there in the middle of the wintertime, it was like zero degrees out, with his excavator.
Where are you?
Took it up, started it up, and the boom just cracked in half.
Wow!
It's, it has to warm, you have to warm the boom when it's that cold.
To save some space.
Because, you know, when you move it back, when you put stress on the boom, it will eventually heat it up, but if you just take it out at zero degrees and hit the hard ground, it cracked.
Hope you don't. Okay, introduce yourself.
My name's Eric James. I'm with CS Energy, the project manager. Andrew, who's also with CS Energy. And then Christina.
Christina Tapia, from CVE North America.
So, we are...
CVE North America.
So, we're from the EPC contractor of the solar field. Uh, we, we built the field basically as a general contractor, and CVE is the owner of the field.
Okay.
So, um, I'm not sure exactly what you have on the agenda here, but essentially, we wanted to come here today to, um, show that, you know, we're fully invested in this project, and I realize there were some concerns from the building inspector in regards to the witness test that we had scheduled for yesterday of the project, which is essentially a re-closer protective test to ensure that the facility has been built properly and to ensure that the energization of the facility, when it happens, goes smoothly. So, I brought here some, some plan sets. I have the conditions, and, um, I guess at this point, I'd like the board to express any concerns they have, um, from your perspective.
Well, I mean, assuming, assuming that the... I don't remember all of the conditions of all of the approvals that we did.
Sure.
But most of them basically said that it had to be built according to the plans, and if there wasn't, the building inspector had the right to order a cease and desist so, on the project. So, if he's not happy, he's our person in the field. If he's not happy with how it's being built, I think you need to work with him to make him happy.
Sure.
Or, or else he's, he's obligated to issue a cease and desist to stop the project until it comes in compliance with the plans that were submitted.
Understandable, and I guess at this point, both CS Energy and CVE are a little confused as to how we're not in compliance. Um, that's essentially why we came here. So, we have plans that were submitted, which were approved with the special permit. Those plans were taken and used, slightly revised, to issue an IFC set that was submitted to the town back in September of 2020, and that set was used to issue the building permit. Um, you know, that set was signed off by the planning board and all other relevant departments for the project, and, um, we have constructed, constructed the field in accordance with those plans, and we're really curious as to what the concern is, really.
Do you have the as-built mylar? Sorry to cut you off.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine.
Sure, so I, at, at last notice, I was unable to get a mylar.
And I, I understand what you're asking, but this board has not seen the project.
Sure.
We haven't seen, we, we haven't gone out there with the plans and seen what, if any, the differences are between the plans and what's done.
Sure.
We are depending on the building inspector to do that.
Sure.
He is our, he is our eyes, ears, and enforcement official.
Nope, understandable. I was hoping he would maybe be here to express his concerns, because to be honest with you, I still am a little confused as to what they are. So, this is, this is a survey as-built...
I'm not trying to cut you off. I, I, I cannot render you a meaningful opinion or direction, because I don't know what the differences are between what's been constructed and the plan that was approved.
Me neither.
The building inspector does, and you've got to satisfy him, okay? We're going to be looking for a letter from the building inspector that he's satisfied with the construction of the thing and that it conforms with the plans that were approved.
Sure.
So, we're not, we're not the right parties to be talking to this.
Okay.
Talking to you about this, is the way I feel. I mean, that's just my feeling.
No, I mean, none of us have been out to the site to see... We don't know what's, what's not been met here.
And we're not the enforcing authority.
Right.
Doug was there.
Yes, I, I've been out there, and our, our main concerns are with the visual barriers, and we, we voice those concerns to you, and then there's numerous concerns on the stormwater end of things, and talk, I talked to Pat earlier. Um, so, as part of the plan stated, you guys weren't supposed to disturb any of the land. That was part of it. Land was disturbed. The boulders that were moved from the land were dumped into the wetlands. The storm basin wasn't constructed to what was spec'd out to be constructed as.
So, if I could just stop you on those two right now, just before we get too far ahead. Um, you know, the storm basin, um, was submitted on the IFC set, which was approved with the building permit, and there was a slight difference in the basin in the plan that was submitted to the building, uh, department for the approval of the permit, and there was a culvert added because it was a DEP requirement that our civil engineer had to add.
Okay.
And that plan was approved, and it's built per spec in the field.
Did it show boulders in the detention pond?
There are no boulders in the detention pond.
Well, that's not what I'm hearing from...
When I, when I walked out, when I walked out back there...
So, there's boulders right here on the plan, which is shown, right? And this is the, um, I'm sorry if that's not the right, the right plan. I, I know Pat has concerns with that, and we, we have a, a meeting with him next week. He wanted us to get a drawing prepared for him with the wetland line to show him.
And again, I'm going to repeat it. I'm not trying to give you a hard time.
Sure.
The building inspector is the enforcement official. You have to satisfy him that the plans and the construction are in conformance. If your screening's not the way the show is on the plans, then you've, you've got to work it out with him. You've got to change your screening. If there's material that's in the wetlands, that's not what's shown on the plan, you've got to work it out with him.
I, I understand that, sir, but at this point, what we're saying is that there are no differences in the screening, there are not boulders in the wetlands, and there is no difference in the basin from what was approved. And, um, Jim, when he came to site, I was expressing these opinions from what we have submitted. However, he has his opinions on it, and I understand that maybe the trees might not look in, in person like they may look on a plan set. You know, they're four-foot tall trees on a two-foot tall berm, and they've just been planted. They're not fully developed, you know, they might not provide the screening at this point, which they will in the future. However, I guess our question is, at this point...
Are they the same species and the same spacing that shows on the plans?
Correct, yeah.
Then, then you need to go over that with Jim. You know, I mean, I...
Right.
And he's shaking his head no.
I, I mean, just being out there and looking at the berms, I, and obviously, there was a conversation with UMass that had, had happened.
Yeah.
I, I'm not satisfied with the way the berms look personally, and on the plans that say that there was going to be mulch placed around the, around each tree. There was also supposed to be three turnbuckles that were placed on each tree. That hasn't been done yet. There is overgrown vegetation all over each berm.
Yep.
Which should have been combated, which should have been combated with the mulch, because usually what happens, they put the carpet down, they lay the mulch over that. Um, in addition to that, the plans show that the trees are going to be planted on top of the berms. All the trees aren't planted on top of the berms. They're staggered, and if they are staggered, then there's, the berm should have accounted for that in the width. But that's our issue right now. Um, in the meantime, if, if whatever Jim, other, other concerns Jim has in terms of this, um, obviously...
Yeah, we're not going to overrule Jim at this, at this table.
Okay.
You know, we're, we're, we're depending on him, you know, to make the proper decisions and make sure the thing is built the way it was supposed to be built.
Not to be disrespectful to you. I think you guys got to go down, make an appointment with Jim and Pat, sit down together, work this thing out. Otherwise, because if we walk out there, we'll stick it even worse than them.
It, uh, you know, if you've got wetlands issues that you've got to deal with, you know, again, you've got it, you've got to convince Jim and Pat that there's no issue there. You know, right now, you're not in that situation. We're not going to overrule the conservation commission or the building inspector. I'm not.
Understandable. Nope, that's, that's fine. So, we, we will arrange another visit with, with the both of them.
Please.
And we will get into detail more specifically.
And Doug, have Doug and Pat and Jim all sit down with you guys. If you want to go out there and have a meeting out there, set it up for out there, so they all know what's going on. Everybody knows what's going on, and put it all together.
Okay. That, that being said, we'll, we'll arrange that. We'll get into that more detailed, and I'll bring the plan sets, and we can look at those, you know. Both CS Energy and CVE has, you know, no intention of leaving this project until you guys are not satisfied. Um, you know, that being said, the reasoning for us really coming here, um, we had, like I said, we had a witness test scheduled, and this is something that's between Eversource the utility and the electrical inspector that was arranged after the sign-off and the COC of the site. And, um, you know, I know Jim expressed a concern with item 13 on this special permits. So, my question for you guys at this point is, um, you know, we are looking to continue with our test with the utility. This is by no means generation of the facility. There will be no power output from the facility. The facility will not be operating, or I guess use of the facility would be the term that's expressed here, and I'm asking that we be allowed to continue with our scheduled tests with the utility, and the field will not be operating until these conditions with Jim, with the planning board, and with the conservation commissioner satisfied through our visits.
Okay, I, I understand that, and I'm not trying to give you a hard time. The, the planning board's role is we, we approve the plans.
Yep.
It's supposed to be built that way.
Okay.
Now, it goes over to the building inspector, the wiring inspector, the conservation commission, to assure that it's built in accordance with those plans and in accordance with the conservations, uh, regulations also. We're not, I'm, I am not going to tell the building inspector, the conservation commission, or the wiring inspector what they should do or they shouldn't do. If they feel that they shouldn't be doing this test now, then I personally am not going to tell them they have to. You know, I, you, you've got to satisfy our local authorities. They're the ones that are in charge of this project at this point. If you need a change to the plans, by all means, come back to the planning board, and we will discuss it. But that's, that's not what I understand we're talking about right now.
No, that's, that's fine. Um, not, not so much that. I'm more so looking for some clarity on item 13 on this special permit that was issued by you guys, as far as this condition is concerned.
Then I would suggest you talk to the building inspector, and if he's not clear on it, that he sends us a letter and says he's not sure how to enforce it, and then I would be glad to deal with it. But I'm, I'm, I'm not going to go and, and cross paths with the other building, uh, the other inspectors, uh, because they're the ones that are in control of the project at this point, and you've got to, you've got to get their approval, you know?
Nope, that's, that's completely understandable.
And if they're not clear with, if they're not clear with the condition, then they have to ask us what they, they have to ask us to, uh, interpret it so that they understand how to enforce it. But that has to come from the building inspector, conservation, the wiring inspector, the fire chief, the police chief, whoever it may be that's in the control of portions of the project that you are unclear about at this point.
Sure, well, you know, that being said, we, we feel pretty clear that we're okay to commence with this aspect, however, with Jim, Jim had threatened with legal action via email, and we're...
Convince Jim, the wiring inspector, you know, conservation, that you're entitled to do that. It's between you and them, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
All right. We are, we are not the enforcing authorities for that construction.
Okay.
Okay?
Nope.
And I'm not trying to give you a hard time, but...
No, no.
No, I'm not going to, I'm not going to get mixed up in something that I don't have the authority, you know, under the regulations and under that special permit to do. If you're requesting a change in the special permit, come in with the change. Okay?
Nope, I don't think we are.
Okay.
At this point. Christina, George, Andrew, do you have anything just to add at all?
Yeah, no, thanks for your time tonight. I just want to reinforce the comment from Eric, from CVE's standpoint. And I'd just say, you know, that it's pretty complicated to schedule out this business that we could be taking with EverSource. It took us more than six months to get this test scheduled out and select the data for everyone, so.
You don't have to tell us what you're doing.
We understand all that, but it really comes down to what our position is or what our requirements are in the process at this point. And our requirements, our requirements and authority at this point is if you want to change something on the plans or in the special permit, then you have to come to us for it. If it's an interpretation issue or a problem with the local inspectors, you've got to deal with them.
No, we're not requesting any change. We're just asking for permission to conduct this testing.
Can we give these folks this from Jim?
Yeah, I have plenty of copies of it. Absolutely.
Number one priority.
Yep.
That's from Jim.
This is the letter from Jim.
Do you have that?
No, no, we do not. So this is the first time we're.
Okay, well, I would say, suggest that you, all of the three of you, take a look at it and then go speak to Jim.
We were going off just strictly just an email from the site. So we had no documentation really at that point.
We had to help you, went out there to hurt you.
Sure, no, understandable and just, you know, to reiterate, both CVE and CS Energy are here to complete these projects. We have no financial interests and we have no interest in leaving anything undone. So I guess we will continue with Jim and go from there.
And please, Conservation, if they've got issues too in terms of what's been done in and around the wetlands.
Conservation is taking over.
Please resolve that too.
It's a stormwater authority.
We relinquished the stormwater to Conservation now because they deal more with that. So Pat's doing that. And get together with Doug and Pat and Jim and go from there. Okay?
Okay.
Great.
Understandable. Thank you. You guys great time.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Sorry to keep you in the hot building.
Oh, that's all right. It wasn't too bad. Thank you.
Do you have, you want to tell Jim what to do?
I'd tell nobody what to do. Do you have the article for this public presence? I have to read the article.
They were together.
Thank you.
What are we doing now?
Public hearings. Zero and 165 Nice Lane.
Okay, zero and 165 Nice Lane.
I don't think that was unreasonable. I mean.
No, you're a hundred percent.
You're absolutely right.
I told them these exact concerns out in the field and this is.
Yeah. I mean, Jim's the authority out there. They've got to satisfy Jim or Jim's going to issue a cease and desist.
I do understand some things on their end of things.
No, I mean, I understand they don't want to slow things down, but you know.
It's not necessarily slowing things down. I think their concern was while we were out in the field, Jim had seen unreasonable with some of the things. But on their end of things, they were also very unreasonable with some of the things we were. Which I told them lately, I'm concerned with the visual barrier. We have people that live at the end of the street. There's people that live in the front of the street. You guys haven't satisfied this.
When I'm being told by our town inspectors that there's boulders in the detention pond and there's issues with how the wetlands were treated, I mean.
Didn't construct basin, cleared and grub the entire field. Filled areas to get battery storage out of the groundwater.
Just do that to you guys, okay? With that, I got to say we go from regular meeting to a public hearing, right?
Yes.
Motion to go to public hearing for.
Zero and.
165.
165 Nice Lane. Zero and 165 Nice Lane.
With that, Acushnet.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Acushnet Planning Board, notice a public hearing Thursday, 9/16/21, 6:30 PM, Pottingsway's Building, 130 Main Street, 2nd floor, Acushnet, Mass. 02743. Notice is hereby given that the Acushnet Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on September 16th, 2021, at 6:30 PM in the Planning Commission office at the Pottingsway's Building. The meeting is held in accordance with Chapter 41, Section 81T to consider the following petitions. Proposed Form C subdivision of a four lot, is this the right one?
No.
No.
No, we're on zero, 165 Nice Lane.
Do you have a copy of that one? No?
That was together in the ad.
Okay, yep, I'm sorry. So it was 301 Perry Hill, then the next one was proposed ground-mounted solar array, zero and 165 Nice Lane solar array installation. Assesses map 18 lots 57 and 57A, Acushnet, Mass., proponent R&amp;R Renewables LLC, represented by Henderson Consulting Services. The plans and the company documentation for both petitions are available for inspection at the Town Clerk's Office, Pottingsway Building, 130 Main Street, 1st floor. These were in the papers consecutively, 9-2 and 9-921. If you are here, please introduce yourself and tell us.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members and neighbors. My name's Robert Nacer. I'm a principal at R&amp;R Renewables. I'm here with Scott Henderson, Henderson Consulting. He's the civil engineer on the project. Also here with us this evening is Ted Chopper. He's the owner of 165 Nice Lane. And Francis Mills, the owner of Zero Nice Lane. And with your permission, I guess I'd like to go over the project for the benefit of the board and also for everyone else here and for the folks at home to give a quick overview of the project, with your permission.
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
Thank you very much. So we have a proposed ground-mounted solar array. There are 540 panels each on two separate lots. Lot, map 18, lot 57, and map 18, lot 57A. Each of the lots is approximately two acres in size. The owners are here this evening. The lot 57 is improved by a single-family house in the front. It's about 20 feet off of the road. And as you can see, the proposed solar array is on the back half of that lot. Lot 57A is currently vacant. It's used and leased out. Mrs. Mills has it leased out to somebody who has a garden in the front and some livestock in the back. Just to go over the general attributes of the property, they're both narrow lots. They're about 130 feet in the front and they go back approximately 750 feet in the back. As you can see, there's about, we're probably using about half of that distance for the solar, which will be in the back. It slopes from the high side here, which would be the northwest corner. It slopes to the southeast corner of the property. There's also, I think, one of the things that I'd like to note is there's a change in elevation from this point here to the back of the property is 25 feet. So there's a pretty good slope going towards the back of the property. Some of the other attributes, there is an existing hedge on Mrs. Mills' property. Right approximately where this fence line is, it's maybe a 30-foot hedge, existing evergreen hedge there. To the north of the property, there is, it looks like there was some sort of barn or shed there. I'm not quite sure. There are also some storage trailers up the property. I'm not sure exactly what's there, but there's some storage trailers there. To the south of the property, there is a single-family home next to Mrs. Mills' property. It's probably 20 feet off of Nice Lane. There's a berm that's been constructed there. And then it looks like maybe some sort of construction yard. I'm not sure what gets used back there. And then, of course, to the west of the property, there would be a single-family home. I think the closest one across the street is number 172, if I believe, which would be approximately in this area over here. We've spoken to Mary Ellen at the Conservation Commission. We gave her the set of the plans. We're outside of the 100-foot buffer zone, so we did do our due diligence, talking to the Conservation Commission. We also were in touch with the fire chief, Chief Gallagher. I know there was a question about that. He did review the plans and he sent an email back to me and also to the town planner saying that he was, you know, "good luck with your project," basically is what the email he sent back to me. As I said, there would be about approximately 540 panels per array. And I guess with that, I would ask that, there was a question last board meeting about maybe the locus, the location. So we put together a wider scope sheet for everyone to look at. And I guess with that, maybe this is a good transition. I'll ask Scott to go over maybe some of what he's done to regarding the drainage requirements here. And also he can point out the distances from our array to some of the neighbors. That was a concern at the last hearing.
So I'll back up to this plan again. For the record, my name is Scott Henderson of Henderson Consulting Services, civil engineer for the project. With regard to drainage, one thing that I don't think Rob touched on is access to the array. So the intent here is to avoid creating two new curb cuts on Nice Lane to provide access to the array at the very northwest corner of the 165 Nice property. There'd be a 14-foot wide gravel access road, as is required by the fire chief, that runs along that north property line, curves down to the south and provides access to another 14-foot wide gravel spur between the two arrays. So that's kind of what we try to work out, minimizing the amount of new impervious area as much as possible while providing that vehicular access. With regard to drainage, the intent is for the majority of that new gravel roadway to be able to capture runoff from that and using a swale along the south side of this spur, we're able to capture most of the water from this portion of the site into a newly constructed detention basin. Now, as Rob mentioned, the general topography now, everything flows from this corner down to this corner, so it only makes sense to keep that additional water in that area. So we have some of the site that will run around that basin. It won't capture everything because if you try and capture an entire site in the basin, it gets exponentially bigger. But it's designed to attenuate increases in peak runoff rates and volumes. So there's a full Hydracad model, drainage model submitted with that, that shows that after development, there's no additional runoff volume or rate leaving the site for any design storm up to the 100-year storm. With regard to what happens to that water once it leaves the property, again, no change in hydrology. Where it goes now is where it's going to go afterward. And it leaves this corner at the southeast corner of the project locus. You can see here, this is the town GIS, but it has mass GIS wetland here. These big green squashes. There's a hydraulic connection between there. That's not a mapped stream. That's just an intermittent stream. That water runs from north to south. So any water that leaves our site, this corner is going to eventually enter this wetland in terms of any potential encumbrance on an abutting property. That wetland separates the developed portion of all these properties on Middle Road and all that stormwater winds up in the same spot it always has and then continues down to the south where it crosses under Middle Road. Therefore, it doesn't cause any sort of encumbrance on a portion of an abutting property that could reasonably be developed. You're not allowed to alter wetlands without a reason now, so where the water goes now won't have any impact on those abutters. Also, this area is a heavily wooded corridor, so from a visual perspective, no one on Middle Road is going to be able to see anything through that area. So it's a basic summary of the drainage, but I can elaborate if you have any questions.
And I guess with that, the only other thing I guess I would like to mention is that, you know, of course, there'll be a fence around the project as required. And the own, oh, one other thing I do want to mention. All of the, all of the, all of the wiring will be underground from the utility pole back to the arrays. Everything here, we're talking about, anything from the street back to the solar arrays will all be underground, be trenched, and everything will be put underground. So there'll be no overhead wires on the property whatsoever.
Excuse me one second. Mike, you all set? Go right ahead.
So that was just the one thing I wanted to add, Mr. Chairman. And I guess with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Can we just discuss what we do on a public hearing? We let these guys explain it, then we have the planning board ask all their questions, then we have the public pro and pro ask their questions. Okay? Everybody understand that one? With that, guys on the board, do you have any questions?
I think the only question we had last time was about where that water was going to run out of the back of the.
Yeah, that was the last time. If you could bring that plan with the wetlands on it on again. Now, just north of that access road near Nice Lane, the access road near Nice Lane, yeah, that section from there out to Nice. Is there, is there a dwelling on the northerly, on the lot that's just north of it? So there is a dwelling there.
There was something there, but it's been knocked down. There's nothing there right now.
Okay, so it's not, it's not a house that somebody's living in right now?
No.
Okay. And what about on the lot that's just to the south of those two lots, that one?
Right. So there is a house right here, right up in the very, very front of the property here.
All right. About how far is it from that house to the beginning of the solar array, just about?
Beginning of the array to the street line is about 350 feet. So just sort of estimating based on the GIS here, I'd say from the corner of that house to this corner is probably in the 300-foot range.
What is the character of the land in, to the west of both solar arrays?
This?
Yeah.
So as Rob had mentioned, there's a hedgerow, there's a fence line here, there's a hedgerow here. It's fairly, screens fairly well. There's a tree line along most of.
Stonewall. There's a stone wall here.
Stone wall with some mature trees along.
Is the land that the solar arrays are on now, is it a field? Is it wooded?
It's a field.
It's a field. There is some, I think that there are some, on the plans that I submitted, there are some trees. There's probably maybe, how many trees did we have to take?
15.
There's about maybe 15 trees.
Okay, it's essentially a field then. It's not a heavily wooded lot or anything.
No, no, it's essentially a field. I think, you know, maybe a hayfield, I guess I would call it on one side and a pasture on the other side.
You're still haying the field, right?
Yes. Okay.
This one's all hay.
To the east of the detention pond, what, I take it at that point, it's wooded and wetlands and pretty dense?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a stone wall back here too. Actually, the property line is the stone wall back there.
And topographically, you know, the area where the solar array starts is approximately 12 feet below, 12-plus feet below the elevation at the edge of Nice Lane.
Okay.
So it's dropping down and with those arrays, what's the leading edge, nine-ish feet off the ground?
I think it's, on the high, probably for this one, would be about 10 and a half feet to the highest point on the back of the array.
The highest point of these panels is still below the street.
On that particular plan, this, my eyes aren't so great anymore. This is like, there's like a blue, there's like a blue line that's just to the west of the wetland. No, that. Yeah, that guy. What's that? What's that?
So that's a hydraulic connection. So that's mapped on the USGS topography.
Okay, all right.
Intermittent stream or not even, it's really just when this wetland fills with water, though they show the, they call it.
And it connects the wetlands together.
Yeah.
Battery arrays? Do you have any battery arrays?
No, we don't have any batteries. No.
Okay.
That's the future though, but we don't have any here.
So it's not required on all sites? Is that what you're saying, the backup?
No, the battery is an option. You don't have that.
I'm all set. What type of fencing are you using?
So, I'm sorry.
Go right ahead, Doug.
Yeah, yeah. What type of fencing are you using around the property?
So we would propose a chain link fence, a galvanized chain link fence around the property.
Okay.
And anything to stop the vision from Nice Lane down to there? Are you going to put any trees up along the front side?
Well, to be honest, I think there is already a visual buffer here that is, you won't need anything.
Okay.
I didn't bring a photo of that, but yeah, it's right here. It's right on the fence line there.
And then you have the house on this one. And then the topographic change, you know, if you're, it's so far below you. You know, it's not like it ruins, you know. Maybe 350 feet. It's probably a small visual impact at most, if at all.
Are there any other plans to do anything on the west side of the southerly lot?
Over here?
Yeah.
Not at present, but it's kind of left as is.
Yeah, I don't, we don't have a plan. I guess that would be up to Mrs. Mills and her, whatever she wants to do up there.
Okay.
So we're not, this is not, you know, the area, this would be free to potentially, you know, if she wanted to use it for, I think that, I'm not sure. I'll ask you. The plan is to still lease it to the fellow that's out there right now, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. I was just curious.
Gentlemen on the board, any more questions from the public? Would you like to just state your name and?
Sure, my name's Scott Fertado. I live on Nice Lane. I guess technically representing two properties on Nice Lane. So my question goes, number one would be for the hedgerow. Any requirements to maintaining that hedgerow, that it stays there and doesn't get chopped down so that the visual impact from Nice Lane could be changed in the future?
That's, you know, we, I can say from my perspective, we really don't, the way that the arrangement is. that the arrangement is, is with the landowners, that we don't control that front half of the property. So if, it would be up to Mrs. Mills, whatever she plans to do with that.
So that could be removed at any point in time and then that visual impact could change? Is that correct?
Presumably, I guess that would be up to her, yeah.
So there's no guarantee that there will not be visual impact to Nys Lane? I just want to make sure I got this clear.
Well, then may, there, we, I can't guarantee that that hedgerow will be there forever or never.
That's not the question, I'm sorry. I'm trying to be difficult, Mike. The specific question is, is there any guarantee that the visual impact from Nys Lane to the solar array? Is there any guarantee of visual impact to Nys Lane?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I would say there's no plan to put any, any sort of vegetation in.
That's what I'm saying. The hedge is getting removed and we got, you could potentially see it from Nys Lane.
Sure.
That, that certainly could be one of the conditions of approval of the project. That additional hedgerow be placed to the west end of those solar arrays so that they would be required to maintain that one. But the intermediate one would of course be up to the landlord.
Correct, obviously, yeah.
Okay.
And I guess my, my second comment would be probably towards the board more than it would be to the people that do the project. And I guess my, my main concern would be that we're giving up potentially some farmland for solar, and I'm not sure that's a long-term sustainable thing for the town. Like, I'm asking if it's, if you feel like that's a good avenue to continue doing, if we're giving up farmland, land that's being currently farmed for an individual, to give that up to solar.
I mean, in years past, what we've seen is the farmland gives away to subdivisions. So it, if there's open land that is available for housing, typically in this town, it's been turned into housing. So what you're really looking at is, you know, once the, the farm, the farming becomes non-viable anymore, that somebody would normally come in to put a small subdivision in and put several lots up. So that's really what, that's really the either or there, you know, house lots or solar array.
Mr. Chairman, could I just, could I address that one?
Certainly.
So one other thing I think that should be known is that this is, there is a termination point on this at some point as well. So the, the solar array is there for a fixed period of time, but it may not be there forever. Matter of fact, it's going to be a requirement of the board that there be a decommissioning bond posted so that when the solar array is at the end of its useful life, it gets removed and that there are funds there to be removed. So I think it's an interim. You may see it as a long-term, you know, it's 20 years, it may be long-term from you, but I think from the larger planning perspective, at least my opinion, is that it is a temporary structure on the property. It's not, it's not permanent, it won't be there for 100 years.
Anybody else?
Yeah. I live on 172 Nys Lane.
Just introduce yourself.
Oh, sorry, Joey and Chopper. I live on 172 Nys Lane, right directly across the street, that house there. I'm concerned about the noise that might come from this. It's nice and quiet now, like Scott said, it's farmland and I don't have any noise or humming or buzzing from transformers or anything like that. That's my main concern.
Yeah, I mean, I can assure you, you won't hear any, that we know, everything is silent from the equipment. They do have fans in the, the inverters that are located down here, have small little fans, but they're like a fan, I don't know, on your computer maybe, that's the way I would see, to keep the electronics cool in the, in the inverter, so.
There's no transformers like in the front? It looks like this.
There'll be a, there'll be a pole-mounted transformer here on the utility pole here, and there'll be a transformer here on this. So, I mean, I don't know, transformer unless it's bad, it shouldn't be making any noise at all. It should be silent.
But if it is bad, then?
That would be ever-source, you'd have to come out and replace it then. That's an ever-source, ever-source will own the telephone pole and will own the transformer. So if there is a problem with the transformer, it would be ever-source, up to ever-source to come out and replace it.
Now, that can't be put in the back anyway?
No, they have to have access to the telephone pole, you know, if it was up to me, I'd say, okay, let's run a telephone pole, but, you know, it would be cheaper for us if they could do that, adding, you know, putting underground utilities is expensive, but that's their requirement. They need access to it, it has to have an emergency disconnect, the fire department needs to be, have access to the property, I mean, to the disconnect. So, yeah, it has to be within, you know, the street, close to the street. That's their requirement.
All right, back to 165 Nys Lane now. You're not going to put any trees there. Again, I live, I live right across the street, I can see down that field. And you're not going to put a buffer there, you're going to leave the abrevities there on the other lot, the front lot, but on the hayfield, I can see them. Is there a possible way to put trees there? Even though it drops down, like you said, I can still see the back of that.
Right. Yeah, I mean, we don't have a plan for that. You know, I guess if it's the pleasure of the board.
That's one of the things, that's one of the things the board would, would have to consider. And that's the reason for this hearing, so that we hear what the, what the issues are for the neighbors to the property.
Yeah. I've lived my whole life.
It certainly, it certainly, it certainly looks, at least from my end, that there's going to be an additional screening requirement out there. I mean, the other board members have to agree with that.
Now, another thing, how often are you going to maintain this? I mean, is there going to be traffic, like trucks going down there all the time? And I don't know, I mean.
Yeah, no, no, it's, I mean, it's a fair question. I think as little as possible. I mean, the, one of the, the great things about solar is that you don't need to maintain it. We keep track of all of our solar systems. Everything is remotely, there's either a cellular or Wi-Fi connection, we can, we can monitor the output of the system. If something goes bad, sure, we'll send a truck down to do a repair. But on a general, you know, if everything's going well, maybe we'll do a once-a-year stop, just to do a once-a-year checkup on the system, make sure it's, it's, it's working fine.
Now, that won't affect our electricity either? If there's a problem there, will our electricity?
No. Matter of fact, this is, you know, one of the things that ever-source requires is that this transformer for this system and the transformer here for that system are dedicated for the solar. That's one thing that ever-source is requiring, is that the transformers be dedicated for the solar. So if there is, so it should have zero effect on any of the neighboring houses out there. They make you pay for a brand-new transformer. That's part of their reasoning is, and the thought process, they don't want to disrupt the electric supply for any reason, even if it's, there is no reason, if it's connected. So there should be no, no disruption of your electric supply related to the solar at all. No, yep, hold on, I'm sorry.
Sorry. My name is Margarita Fertado. I live on 181 Nys Lane. I would like to, if you could explain to me something, those transformers, how huge that's going to be and how visible it is going to be? Because I live not in the next door, then the door, and if I'm outside in my yard enjoying myself, that's why I bought the house where I grew up, to enjoy my greens and my, because I do have a little farm. I want to know how visible that's going to be when I walk up and down with my grandson, my granddaughter, or myself, when I walk up and down? How visible, how big is that going to be? And like I, like she said, how noisy it's going to be? Because in the summer, we have air conditioning, in the spring and in the fall, we open the windows. And I want to know, I'm concerned, how is that going to be? And if those greens that she, that you talked about between the slopes, I've seen some of those greens, I've been there, I'm the one who told, she got, I got the guy for her to rent and I've been there. I want to know how's that going to be close enough so we don't have to see it?
All right, I think that, I don't mean to interrupt you, go ahead.
Go ahead. I just want to know how that close it's going to be because if, if the trees are like this, because I know what they are, I've been there plenty of times, if the trees are going to be like this separated, we're going to see it, no matter what, we're going to see it. It has to be from the ground up. I know it slopes down, like I said, I've been there, slopes down, but it is going to be visible because those things are not small. I, I know what they are, they're not small. I would like to know if that, how that visible is going to be, with the transformers and everything else.
Right. Well, I think that the board is probably going to address the issue with the, with the screening. As far as the transformers, they should be, again, they should be silent. There'll be two new transformers. One is on a pole that's going to be just on the south side here, it's probably maybe 10 or 15 feet off of the road. So there'll be, there's an existing utility line and telephone pole system all along that side of the road right here, right? On the west side of Nys, on the east side of Nys Lane, there's existing telephone poles. So there will be one of the pole, there'll be a pole added on Nys Lane exactly in line with the existing telephone poles. The only reason they're going to add that is so they can put a transformer on it. The transformer, it's a 167 kilovolt transformer. It's probably maybe three feet high and maybe 18 to, 18 to 24 inches in diameter, so, you know, it's like a transformer.
Is that like a regular transformer that are on?
Yes. Every telephone pole and all the neighbors. There are different sizes. This will be one of the larger ones, but it is a pole-mounted transformer, so it will go up on the pole. But it's, it's like any other transformer, you see them up and down the road, you know, everywhere.
Everybody else?
And I'm sorry, your other, the other question?
I mean, it's not going to be some, some huge six-foot diameter, you know, 10 or 12-foot long transformer.
No.
There's a limitation to how big of a transformer they can hang on a pole anyway.
Exactly. They, they can't do anything, anything bigger would have to be on the ground and it's, it's a big, it's large, they, they come in all different sizes, but I'm sure you've been by them, you've driven by them 100 times, you wouldn't, wouldn't have necessarily noticed that it was, but that's what it is, a pole-mounted transformer.
Anybody else? Please feel free.
Just a quick question. What is the ground going to be under the panels that get all converted to like gravel? Does the grass go away?
Sure, yeah, usually there's grass underneath it, so.
And that has to be maintained?
Yeah, that's part of the maintenance arrangement.
How, how often would you plan to be in there to mow, trim in and around and underneath the panels?
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't have to be mowed like a lawn, so, you know, you would do it maybe a couple of times a season, I would, I would suspect.
Two or three times a year.
Yeah, I mean, just so that it doesn't grow up and get unwieldy and interrupt, you know, you don't want to disrupt your, your collection, solar collection either, so.
So I think that, that would answer one of the questions from, from the audience. I mean, they're, they are going to have to go in there two or three times a year and you'll hear a mower, you know, for half a day, a day, something like that. And that'll be the end of it. I, I'm guessing, how long, how long is it going to take them to, you know, do the mowing and the vegetation control?
As little as part-time as possible because they're getting paid by the jobs, so they're in and out.
They won't be in there for three weeks, but, you know, is it, is it more in the order of a day or two?
If you, if he was there for a half a day, it would be, it would be a long time. They would get it done in a half a day, I would say.
Okay, so three times, three times a year, half a day. And they would be during the day, so, you know, it's, obviously they're not going to do it at nighttime or hopefully not at 3:00 in the morning.
No, that, no, that wouldn't happen.
Okay.
It would be, you know, just envision a landscaper, somebody going in and mowing a lawn, that's what it is.
That, that might be something we would consider as a condition, is that if you are going to do that, do you wait till after 8:00 in the morning before the mowers get out there?
That's fine, yeah, no problem with that.
That would be the biggest, I mean, from what I've understand from the previous proposals we've, we've heard, the inverter makes very little noise. Once you get beyond 20 or 30 feet from it, which everybody is here, you can't hear it. The fans are essentially, no one's going to hear that. You'd have to be right up against the inverter to hear the fans. Transformers, properly operating transformer, you don't, you don't hear them. If there is a noise from it, then you need to call ever-source, tell them that there's a problem with their transformer.
Anybody else? Please feel free, that's a fundamental carry.
Just one more thing too about the trees. So they're only going to go in front, the, the abrevities, they're not going to go like around the whole thing because you're going to have a fence, but you're not going to have abrevities on all four sides then. You're only going to basically have them in the front.
Well, I mean, we don't have a proposal right now, but I guess that would be a discussion with the board. I would say if, if they, I'm not sure, certainly on this side, I wouldn't see any reason for that. To the south side, we would try to avoid that because that would be shading on the, on the solar panels and the north side.
But that's where they live, on the south side.
Yeah, I mean, we're, you know.
Well, where, where is, where is the house that, that we're talking about?
Where's your, where's your home, ma'am?
My home?
Yeah. Is it on this map here?
Yep, the little square box.
This one?
Down, down.
This one right here?
Okay, okay, so you're there.
Yeah, I mean, there is, there's a existing tree line on the stone wall here that we're not going to remove, that's going to stay there.
That wouldn't really cover it, no offense.
I'm sorry?
That wouldn't really cover it.
Cover what?
The tree line's not going to cover the solar panels. You know, you're looking at 50-foot trees, there isn't a lot of.
Tannery trees, right? So those are mature.
Yeah, those are mature.
Mature tannery trees.
I mean, I can, I can attest because I've walked that line, you know, you do have trees there, but you also have, there's other growth in there too, in between the trees. It's not like there's just this tree and then it's pristine in between the trees. It's, there's briars, there's green briar, cat briar in there. There's a lot of greens, but there's a lot of green in there.
But there's a farm there that we can see. There's an existing farm there now and we can see the farm. So it's not like, you know, what I'm trying to say is, I know what you're talking about, you're right. It's not one tree here and then 20 feet, there's another tree.
Right.
There's some stuff in the middle, but it's not an abrevity. It's not a fence that's going to block that. That's my point. There's going to be line of sight.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not going to argue with them. I'm saying that there is existing green, greenery there though. I'm not sure the value of adding something there, but that's a discussion that, you know, it'd be up to the board to make, make that decision if they feel that it's, it's required.
Excuse me, I know my house is not that close, but when I'm on my driveway, I can see right through that little house next to it. I can see because my side, my driveway, and I can see like the farm, I can see the cows, I can see everything. The cows are going to be gone some from there. What I'm going to see, you know what I'm going to see, is a solar panel.
Yeah.
Because it's visual, you can see it right through. I live there, I know how it is. I see your point, but I see mine.
And then you're relying on someone else's property to potentially buffer that line of sight, which you don't have control over, neither do we. So that berm could go away. You know, dirt berm that's in the property between the solar farm and the house, that That dirt berm that's in the property between the solar farm and the house, that berm could go away at any point in time, if the owner decides for it to go away. That line of sight is going to increase exponentially. It's, there's, there will be some line of sight now, but if that dirt berm goes away, that line of sight goes huge. So you're relying on, you're relying on some protection from something that none of us here have control.
Right. All I can tell you is the existing conditions right there today. That's all I can say. I can't say about the future. I, I have no, you know, none of us can say what's going to happen in the future. All I can report to you is what are the existing conditions are today.
Well, the president right now, I can see from my house, 172, because I'm in my field all the time. I'm a hundred percent farmer and I can see those fields there right now, the way it is. And if there's no berm, it's, it's like, wow. I'm going to see all those things all the time. And there goes a nice family.
Next time, if you're there, excuse me, next time, if you're there, you can come in my driveway and you can look straight out and you're going to see what I'm trying to accomplish. Straight out.
Sure, I'll, I'll stop over. Next time we're down there, I will, I'll stop over and say hi.
You can see, it's right there, right straight through.
Then come to my house and I'll clear the same thing too.
I mean, you know, I think I've been enough times there, I know exactly where your house is. You know, the driveway where you pull into, to park here for this lot is a little bit, your house is actually, I think that's it, right there, right?
Yeah.
So right across from it. Yeah, so I, I know exactly the perspective from your house.
And that's why the transformer, it's going to be there, it's like, you know, I live right there. I mean, I can hear it. And the owners of the land don't live near there, so it's like, they don't, they don't care.
Fair enough. I mean, Mrs. Mills does live close by.
She won't be able to hear it way up there. I can't hear that.
I can hear her leaves.
Anybody else?
Should put one in your backyard too, touchy.
I just got a couple of questions, just for the record.
Just introduce yourself, please.
Oh, my job, but actually I maintain the property, that's the family farm. She just touched on that. Just for the record, do any of the landowners that live on the property?
Not that I know, I don't know. Not that I know of anyways.
Are you planning on moving there?
No.
So this is just a business now, basically.
I think it's their property and they've chosen to, to do what they see fit with their property, I guess that's it.
Like asking the board, I mean, I look around at all these solar arrays, I know there's a big one in Rochester, I believe on 105 Mendel Road. They actually have like a three to five-foot berm dirt with six or seven-foot abreviates on it. I mean, if you, but that's something that I think the neighbors on each side would require. I know she can see it, they just testified, they can see everything. And I know you said there's greenery there now, two months from now, the leaves are gone, there's no greenery, you can see everything. So, you know, if you're going to, you know, ask the board if you're going to protect the neighbors to make sure there's a berm high enough, at least twelve foot off the existing ground, so nothing can be seen inside there. For the two transformers up front, is there any way you can put shrubbery or sound buffers on the roadside? So if there is a noise coming from there, it does block it?
But it's up above.
The, the transformers...
What's the box down here?
There, there's a meter and a, and a disconnect that are going to be on the ground that have to be accessible and they do not like it if you, if you, if you screen it because they have to find it, there's an emergency to be able to get to the disconnect. So they, they really do not approve of that.
Now, you, I, I was watching a meeting down the hill there and you went through the stormwater, did you do a stormwater study? I know the new conservation agent...
They still have to go through, you bet, on conservation, correct?
Yes. There, there will be a, a stormwater review done by the Conservation Commission to make sure that there's no increase in runoff from, from that property. That's why they've got to build a retention or detention basin to mitigate runoff. In this case, it all goes towards those larger wetlands, so the chances it's going to affect anybody are high.
Right, I should say, you only mentioned it down, downhill there. Property values. No opinion? How does this affect property values?
I mean, it's...
You don't care, basically?
I mean, no, I mean, it's, I'm not sure. I'm not in a property appraiser. I don't know how it would affect the property value. I really don't. I, you know, it depends, you know, I think it's increasing the value for the, for the homeowners, I mean, for the landowners right there, so.
The solar arrays create a lot of personal property taxes.
Well, no, I'm not, I'm talking about the...
Fortunately or unfortunately, a solar array isn't allowed use in the entire state of Massachusetts. So, I mean, if there were none, would the property values be more? Possibly, but there's nothing the board can do to stop the solar arrays. It's, it's an allowed, it's an allowed use. I mean, we can, we can deal with screening to some, to some degree. And, and you know, we will take that up between ourselves, we'll most likely go out there and, and just do a quick visual run around the property. I mean, we will consider that and we'll do what we think should be done for screening. Will it be a twelve-foot high berm? No, it won't be a twelve-foot high berm.
Not a berm, but twelve-foot high with the trees set up.
I've seen, there's different ways to screen the things. I, I have to, to drive around, not this town, but all surrounding towns, and there's different ways that they're screened.
But with the scope of the land, nice lane aside, that's low.
Is it going to be invisible from the road? Probably not. I don't know. There's, there's very, unless, unless they, I mean, the best way, the best way to screen them from view is to put them right up near the front of the road and right near the property lines and put a screen and a berm right around the edge. Well, then that gives you the, the panels, you know, right next to your house. So, you know, I, there's, there's kind of a trade-off there. I mean, the best screening is with the panels up close to your house and the berm and the vegetation right around the edge. I'm, I'm just thinking, when I go by Rochester all the time, the, the array is very close to the road, they put about a six or eight-foot-high fence up, you can't see it at all. But if that array was set back, you know, three, four, five hundred feet, well, then you, you probably would have seen it from the road. So, like I said, there's a trade-off. If this sticks them back away from everybody's house, you know, we will screen around the edge to what seems reasonable. Or I will recommend that we will go and take a walk around there. Obviously, you people live there all the time, you know very well what it looks like. You know, we don't, and we will take a look at it.
So why don't we arrange a walkabout?
Sure.
I don't know, is this weekend too tight for everybody?
Good question.
This will be a bust one for name. This is the bust one for name. That's on, we're talking the eighteenth. Nine AM, good? You guys?
Yeah, nine AM on Saturday, on Saturday.
Okay, if you want to be there, nine AM. Can we have coffee, Joey?
Sure.
I'll make you tea.
Did I have one more question?
Certainly.
Decommission plan now, post the bond?
That goes into peer review and they determine what the decommission fee is. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, but...
It's to remove the panels and restore, and restore the ground afterwards, ba- basically.
But the town has control of that?
Yes.
The company goes bankrupt and then...
Then we have...
It's held, it's held in, in an account by the town treasurer.
Okay. Most of them have been cash at this point, haven't they?
So as of right now, the town treasurer is only accepting cash.
So there you go. There'll be a cash in an account to guarantee that it gets cleaned up afterwards.
Okay, nine, nine AM, Saturday. We will meet, is there a place in that field to meet?
Let's see, we're with the best...
We could be parked other than on Nice Lane.
Yeah, where do you... There's a driveway at the house.
There's parked the driveway.
Okay, is there one by that field?
There is one, there's a, there's a little dirt driveway on the, the southern property there. You could, you could stack in three or four cars.
You want to drive in the yard and round the house, you don't have to even walk if you want to drive back to the factory.
Okay, no, I don't want to drive, I want to walk it.
Oh, well, okay. We drive on it.
No problem. Okay, everybody agree, nine o'clock, if you want to be there? I don't, I don't want to post it, I don't want anybody to say I didn't have the right time or nothing. It's this Saturday, the eighteenth, at nine AM. Any other questions?
Yeah, one more. One of my neighbors, he couldn't make it today, but he says, is this going to affect our utility bills anyway?
I don't believe so.
No. So there's no benefit to us, basically. I mean, it's not our property, though.
Gentlemen, you all settled at nine AM? Any other questions, please? That's why we're having the public hearing. Gentlemen, anything?
I would make a motion that we continue the public hearing to nine AM this Saturday, whatever the date is, and hopefully...
A second, Dave.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. With that, we'll see you at nine AM. And is there a motion to go out of public hearing?
I make a motion to go out of public hearing. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With that, back to the regular meeting. Thank you, folks.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and obviously, thanks for getting back on that email too.
Sure.
Do you, you have like a timeline of that's supposed to be done?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, we, I just, I contacted the fence company, asked them, I said, you know, when are you guys going to get it? And I, as soon as I do, I will...
I know that the only commissioner...
Back from a commercial break. Continue on here with 301 Perry Hill Road. Is there a motion to go from regular meeting into a public hearing?
I make a motion to go from the regular meeting into a public hearing.
There's a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Notice to hereby give in that the Christian Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on September sixteenth, 2021, at 6:30 PM in the Planning Commission office. At the Bounding Way Building, 130 Main Street, second floor, the meeting is held in accordance with Chapter 41, Section 81T to consider the following petitions. Proposed Form C subdivision for a four-lot development at 301 Perry Hill Road for Mark B. Francois, applicant, proposed. That's all there is. With that, introduce yourself, tell us why you're here.
Yeah, good evening. Matt Leone with, I'm named Big Neil Leone, here to represent Mark Francois with a four-lot redivision of properties located on the northwest side of Perry Hill Road. The existing lot is comprised of four individual lots as it stands. It's MAP eight, Lot 25, 25D, 25P, and 25F. They were approved under a retreat lot subdivision, back, our A and R subdivision back in 2006. This is just an overview of the, of the area that we're talking about. And I'll move it over to the existing conditions plan. You guys are familiar with the project already, and familiar with the site. Total, the four lots comprises of about nineteen point three-five acres. The land is, is wooded mix of upland and wetland. The wetland line that you see here has been delineated by Tom Lovett back in November of 2020. And the general drainage areas on the east early side of the road, most of the upland drains into this wetland system, this wetland network here, and then drains under Perry Hill Road. And there's a culvert, big box culvert by the Rochester Town Line, where it's the ultimate outlet for the property. Along the west early side, this significant upland area here is drained solely to the wetland area to the northeast, excuse me, the northwest. There's an existing single-family home, which is Mark's, Mark's dwelling, and it's serviced by a private well and septic system. We have done multiple test pits for soil stability, for the installation of septic systems and drainage. As a note, there is a private way that runs through the southernly butter, up towards bicycling the lot in half, and then up to the northernly butter. It is an existing gravel oak, twelve to fifteen foot wide right-of-way. It's been, has a thirty-foot right-of-way associated with it. And the, due to some of the concerns of the southernly butter, we have decided to move our, our access to our lots solely onto the applicant's property. And I'll bring up the, the lotting plan. See what we're going to have planned. So as you see, the intent is to reconfigure the four lots into four fully conforming lots that are going to be serviced by a fifty-foot right-of-way. And this, this right-of-way will provide access to the three newly created lots or the three new dwellings. The applicant is going to be, continue to access his lot via the existing gravel way and his paved driveway. And I would believe the applicants to the nor, excuse me, the butters to the north will also continue to maintain their access through the existing right-of-way. The lots as they are created will be fully conforming to the Christian bylaws for Residence A District. It'll be sixty thousand square feet, minimum area, minimum upland of forty thousand square feet. And as you can see, they'll have, they'll meet the lot depth and width requirements as well as have more than the hundred and fifty feet of our required frontage. To our creating a drainage plan gives you an overview of the full schematic or the full build-out. So the idea here is, as we said, we're going to be creating a new roadway off of Perry Hill Road. Gravel surface that's going to tie into the existing gravel road at this point, and then continually northerly. So the northerly portion of the right-of-way will be upgraded to provide drainage and a wider surface. We'll be doing a full twenty-foot-wide gravel surface for the entirety of the way. The, with the exception of the, the front here where we're marrying into the pavement on Perry Hill, it'll be pavement for about, I think we have a thirty-foot-long paved apron to provide a clean and safe transition onto, onto Perry Hill Road. The southerly portion of the road here that is going to be newly created will be drained into the wetland, excuse me, the wetland stormwater basins here, and then eventually drained out into the, into the wetland system. And again, through that culvert that I mentioned earlier. There is a small wetland replication that will be created, about twenty-five hundred square feet of wetland replication area that will need to be installed, and that will be done here within the right-of-way that we are proposing. The existing home site, which will be bought for, will remain pretty much unchanged. As I said, the access will, will remain as it is today off of Perry Hill Road, continue to be serviced by the same well and septic. The three new lots will all be on private wells and septic systems. And as I said, we have done percolation tests and soil evaluations, and they are suitable for, for the placement of septic systems on the lots. These, these are obviously conceptual houses. I'm sure there'll be some, some houses with a little bit more personality than just boxes. But the general layout is, is going to be pretty close to what you see here, just due to the proximity of the wetlands, the offsets for wells, and where we've done the test pits. What you'll see here is pretty close to what will, will probably be, be installed or developed. All of the proposed dwellings will have their roof runoff directed into cultech units underground recharge. And any of the associated runoff that may be created from the sites will be collected from the, the stormwater system by grass water quality swales and end up into the, into the four-bay here. So the, the initial new roadway is approximately five hundred and fifty feet, and there's approximately another six hundred feet of, of improvement to the, to the gravel surface And all the roadway construction will be phased in a manner to allow continued access from Perry Hill to the northerly butter and to the site. We will do, do the, the construction in a manner in which there will be no blockage for emergency vehicles or for everyday traffic and travel. No equipment or stockpiles will be done within the right-of-way. We're going to be using the area for, which is shown as Pond B here, for any stockpile of, of materials. And the dust from the site, if there is any associated dust as the, as the road is being constructed, will be controlled with a pump truck fixed with a sprayer to maintain a, a safe travel way. Over the detail of the, of the roadway, it gives you a little more of an idea of the newly created road. Again, we have a paved apron here that's going to tie into Perry Hill Road. There's some significant fill in this area of the wetland disturbance. The wetland replication area is up here. Over this tight slopes here, we are going to have about sixty feet of guard rail, proposed timber guard rail, thirty-one inch, to make sure that there is safe travel and passage along that area. The roadway surface up to the first about hundred, hundred and twenty-five feet will be crowned, and the stormwater will be directed into the basins on either side of the road, the roadway. As we move northerly, move north and west, we're going to have a, we switch over to a super elevated surface. And the reason for that is to direct the stormwater away from the, the butter to the south here and make sure that all the, all the drainage is flowing into our pond network. Once we transition over into the, to the newly, the, the new road transitions into the old gravel surface, there were some concerns from the butters about traffic and possible, possibility of that being a, a crash point or intersection, a dangerous intersection. We've added a couple of speed bumps onto the road to slow traffic down and make sure that people are aware that, and to slow down and make sure that they're aware that there is a, a meeting there and an intersection, as well as I know that there will be plenty of clearance of trees and whatnot to allow for proper site distances and whatnot as people approach from any direction. As it moves over into the, into the existing gravel surface, we will be upgrading that gravel surface, as I said, to the twenty-foot, twenty-foot wide, and we'll be adding a crown to that roadway to convey stormwater into the grass water quality swales and eventually into the, into the stormwater network that we have here. That's really it on this sheet. I'll flip over to the last sheet. This just continues the, the roadway northerly. Gives you a little bit of a better view of the proposed house sites and shows that we're going to continue the crowned roadway surface, again, to convey the water into the stormwater facility. We're proposing culverts underneath the driveways. And one thing I didn't mention is that we are opting for a hammerhead turnaround versus, versus a cul-de-sac for, for turnaround and for access. Let's make sure I have anything else on that. And the applicant will be setting up a formal homeowners association that will maintain the roadway surface for recreating, getting rid of washboards and plot holes. The homeowners association will also take ownership of the road and be responsible, the right-of-way, and be responsible for maintaining the, the four-bays and stormwater network, making sure the culvert's clean, making sure that the, that the roadway swales[1788.41] network, making sure the culverts are clean, making sure that the, that the roadway swells and went out of mode and that, that everything is, is working and functioning properly. So there will be a, a, an operation and maintenance plan that will be associated with the, with the property. We have gotten a peer review. The project's been peer reviewed by S.W. Cole and we have addressed the comments that were given in that letter. The plans that you're seeing tonight are a, reflect those comments. And we did receive an email today from S.W. Cole. They did not submit a formal letter, but they will be coming forth with a formal letter stating that, that we have met their, their issues and addressed their questions. And I'll just quickly run over those just so that we, we know where, what their comments were. The first one was about the drainage on themselves. They had, they took issue with the fact that in the Acushnet subdivision rules and regulations, they are not allowed to have infiltration basins as a stormwater management facility. So what we've done, we, we added some six-inch meter pipes in here to, to allow for the stormwater to drain completely in a storm event out from any one of these basins and out into the wetland system. So there will be not, there'll be no retention or no infiltration through these basins. We've run that through the stormwater analysis and will still be able to maintain a reduction in volume and velocity of stormwater over the two, five, 10, and 25-year storms. Post-construction will be less than pre-existing conditions with that. So that was their first comment. We've addressed that. They has, took some issue with making sure that we provided easements for the stormwater system so that it can be accessed and so that if there needs to be maintenance done, there's no trespassing or whatnot. I don't think what the issue was, we, we've always had the, the easement on the plan, on the lotting plan. It's on lot three, but I don't think that it was clear to S.W. Cole. So it was just a clarification. We added a note on here just to show that there was the easement there. All the other stormwater facilities, culvert that we're adding here, the ponds and the four bays that are over on this side are all within the road layout, which will be owned by the homeowners association. So there is no need, no need for an easement there. One of their other comments was, we have shown on the plan here an edge of water located. What that was, was a edge of water of that day. When I went out and surveyed it, we, we had, we had standing water and it was more of a reference point as to where the low spots were on the lot. They were just curious as to whether or not there was an actual water body there and that again was more of a clarification issue. Their final point, I believe, was that they said that the stormwater management facility will work for the design that, that we have here today, which we agree if there was ever a time in which the roadway was going to be paved, the stormwater system would have to be reevaluated to make sure that we would still maintain that, those reduced volumes Again, this, this proposal has been through the board, through a lengthy preliminary process. The proposal is for a total of four lots, three new homes on a property that has been previously approved for four retreat lots. We've addressed the southerly of butters' concerns by moving the roadway entirely onto our lot, which has pushed us closer to the wetlands, kind of having, pushing us into a situation where we needed to ask for a few waivers, which we'll go over. This roadway has its transition from the existing road grade of Perry Hill and married back into the existing roadway, existing gravel roadway. So there was a little bit of a, of a fit that had to be done to make, to make this work. And due to these constraints, we asked the board to grant the following waivers from the Acushnet subdivision rules and regs. Do you guys want me to go through each one of the waivers?
Sure.
Okay. Article two, required plan content, section 203-J, centerline stakeout required. We've opted not to stake out the centerline of the road, seeing as though, let me actually put up the full view. Seeing as though that over 50% of the road is already aligned. And during the construction process, we will be involved in staking out the road and making sure that we're, we're providing the contractor with the necessary survey control and ease. We felt that, that staking it out pre, pre, pre-project was unnecessary. Article three, the design standards, section 302-G, minimum street alignment curve of 200 feet. We've got a 100-foot curve provided where the roadway meets the, the new roadway will meet the existing gravel surface. Section 302-H, a minimum vertical curve length of 100 feet. Where the roadway transitions back into the newly improved roadway, an upgraded roadway meets back into the existing surface, we have a vertical curve that's 45 feet long versus the 100 that, that is typically required by Acushnet bylaws. Section 305-A, minimum dead-end length of 100 feet, I mean, excuse me, 1,000 feet. We have 1,063 when measured from the intersection point of the, of the hammerhead turnaround. So we're 63 feet over that minimum dead-end length. But the Trips Way, as it's known, has already been approved and granted that waiver. There's already an existing turnaround provided here. We feel that that, that waiver is, is grantable. Section 305-B, minimum cul- excuse me, cul-de-sac 50-foot turning radius. We have opted again for the, the hammerhead turnaround. Section 307, utility of planting strips. The planting strips would be along the shoulder of the road and per the requirements, they're supposed to be five feet wide. In the case where we are running along the abutting property line in order to maintain, again, that, that flow and that drainage towards the stormwater facility and away from the southerly of butter, we've had to come up tight to that lot line. So we are asking for a waiver from that to get down to two and in some cases, three feet versus the five. Everywhere else, it will be the five. Section 403, minimum pavement width with 20, 20, plus it, 20 feet of gravel is provided versus 26 feet of pavement, which is typically required under full compliance. Section 403, minimum centerline radius, again, a similar, similar waiver to the, to the first one we asked for. We have a minimum centerline radius of 100 feet versus the required 200. Section 403, one sidewalk required. We are not going to be building a sidewalk. Perry Hill does not have any sidewalks. It would really be a sidewalk to nowhere. Section 405, street grading. Roadway side slopes due to wetlands will be two to one versus the, the three to one, which is required. That's in this section here where we're tied up against the wetlands and to reduce the wetland alteration, we have reduced our slopes down to two to one versus the three to one. There is, we do have a gravel stone infiltration trench here that will take water away from the, from the slopes to maintain the stability of those slopes. And there are some cross-sections and details. If the board wants to go through them, we can, as far as maintaining those slopes and the stability of those slopes. Ground cross-section, section 406, approximately 400 feet or 38% of the roadway is super elevated. That's that portion here again that we sit, we talked about against the southerly of butters' property line. And that again is a super elevated surface to push the water off of the, away from the southerly of butter into the stormwater facility. Section 406-B, between those curbs, no curving is being provided. We're using surface drainage, not curving, and it's a gravel, it's a gravel road. Section 406-C, drains shall be reinforced concrete. We are using high-density polyethylene pipe, which is common in the industry. And section 406-D is drains shall have 36-inch minimum cover. The HDPE pipe only requires 12, 12 inches of cover, which in some cases will be at that 12 inches. We have received word from National, Nat, Natural Heritage. We are in a natural heritage area, MAF area, and they have given us a clean bill of health to move forward and that we're not providing any detriment to any endangered or, or, or rare species. And we'll sum it up and open it up to have questions.
With that, as being a public hearing, you get to ask the guys on the planning board first their questions and we ask the public. Okay? Gentlemen?
Do we have a list? Do we have that list of waivers submitted to us?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
And it is on the plan as well.
Okay.
On the back of the plan you sent us?
Yeah, it is, it is on the, the lotting plan.
Okay.
And it was included in our package.
Okay. Now, just so that I'm totally clear, anybody that has the right to access along that existing ancient way will continue to be able to do so in the future. There will be no reduction in accessibility for anybody that has present rights to that ancient way?
Absolutely not. From, from Perry Hill Road straight up through onto Trips, what was so-called Trips Way. If anything, it'll only be improved during the section that we are upgrading. There'll be no restriction of access.
About how wide is the existing gravel road right now?
12 to 15 feet.
12 to 15 and your, the proposal is to bring that improved section up to about 20 feet wide?
That's correct. Yep.
And that includes the, the leg that goes out to Perry Hill Road? That's?
Yes, it'll be, it'll be 20 foot of gravel the whole, the whole way, with the exception of the pink pavement.
Okay, right up to the end of the hammerhead?
Well, not right up to the end. It's, it's just shy. I think it's 60 feet of pavement beyond the. Thank you. Yeah, so it, it's, it's, actually, excuse me, it's 80 feet, 80 feet by 80 feet of pavement. So it does, it does stop shy of the, of the layout.
Yeah, like 20 feet or something like that?
Yeah.
I mean, the board's already been out and walked along there. You know, I think that, not tonight, but at a future meeting, we'll address the request for waivers one by one. We, I understand why you're asking for the ones that you're asking for, but we will have to, at some point, grant to approve or disapprove the waivers that you've requested. I guess I'm, I'm all set.
In the original subdivision, what were the, what was the upgrades to the road that being in the original?
The original subdivision was a retreat lot subdivision, four retreat lots with a common driveway.
Okay. But there was not gonna be any upgrade to the, to the roadway whatsoever?
No, there was not any proposal under the original 2006 division.
Yeah, or alternatively, four separate driveways to service the four separate lots.
Right. Now at least we're seeing some road improvement.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I, again, there's been a lot of discussion about this. It's certainly not an unreasonable proposal for what they're trying to. I, I didn't look over the plan in detail. There will have to be a note on the actual subdivision plan that gets filed at the Registry of Deeds that in order to request approval for acceptance of that roadway, the road will first have to be brought up to full subdivision standards with no waivers. We don't want, we don't want somebody coming in later and asking the town to accept the gravel road. That's all. And, and in order to do that, that plant, that note needs to be evident right on the actual lotting plan.
I have the note that we have. Let me just see if that is gonna suffice for what you're requesting. This is the lotting plan, the one that would be reportable. We have a note that says, "Note, roadway shall remain private perpetuity until such time as the roadway construction is upgraded to compliance with the Town of Acushnet subdivision rules and regulations."
Sounds good.
Okay.
In terms of questions or comments, I mean, I'm all, I'm all set at this point.
Brian?
I'm all set.
Who will maintain that little stretch at the end of the hammerhead to the cul-de-sac there?
Doug.
Up to the owners of the cul-de-sac?
I believe it will be the people that are making any, now the northerly of butters.
Okay. Doug, you got any questions?
Uh, no.
Guys? Anybody from the audience, pro, con, for, or against? No one wants to say nothing?
I'm Maria, I'm the southerly of butter.
Just say, state your name, ma'am.
Maria Emerald, I'm the southerly of butter.
Northerly?
Oh, is that, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine. No problem.
My question under your comment that you just made, that, that little stretch, I think it's about 100 feet, right?
Yep.
From where you leap off to where our gate is, you're saying we're gonna maintain that?
It would be under, I guess, I assume that you're maintaining it now. You're maintaining the whole road?
I'm maintaining the whole road because I, I need to pass through the road and it's been a detriment to pass through the road. So it's not my land, but I maintain it because I, I need to pass through it.
Sure.
But that's still not my land and I don't see why it would be, it's part of the association if, if, I don't know the number of the lots, two and three?
Yep.
If they own, where they own, up to the middle?
They would own to the middle of the, of the roadway. Yeah, the way the lot is created, each side would own half of the roadway.
So if they own the road, then they need to maintain it?
I would defer to you, Richard, on that question.
I think right, right now, Richard Burke, I'm an attorney for the applicant. Our view is that you have an easement which we can't disturb, you know, which you've been maintaining the whole road. We're gonna take over maintaining the improved section of the road as shown on the engineered plan and all the drainage. That would be the responsibility of the homeowners association. But as the easement holder, you have the right to continue to maintain that, that remaining strip that we're not showing on the subdivision plan. So as an easement holder, you have a right, even though you don't own the land where the easement goes over, you have a right to maintain it as you have been. So we're proposing that you, you continue to maintain it. We'll take over the rest because we have to show that on the, on the plan as we have that we're improving it, widening it. And we have to do that in order to, to the subdivision.
I don't know, I, I direct to the board, how is that?
That's why I asked the question, if you're gonna maintain it?
It, it doesn't make any sense to me. If I don't own the land, why I have to maintain it? I'd only maintain the road because I'd have to travel and I wouldn't be able to pass through otherwise because it was never maintained. So.
How do you get, how do you get to your lot right now?
Through the, on the 30-foot easement right here.
From Perry Hill, all the way up through, up past the end of the cul-de-sac?
Yes.
And to your circle? Okay, that's, that's all. Mr. Burke, I do have one question for you. Will that northerly of butter have the ability to use the improved section of the road from Perry Hill Road up to where it intersects the ancient way?
Yes, that's our intention.
Okay. Does that, is that gonna have to be, is that gonna have to be a, a separate legal document or is that just inherent in? I mean, it's a private subdivision and a private road. I'm just trying to anticipate a war between parties, you know? No, you can't use that section of the road type of thing.
We intentionally, because we understood they wanted to continue and they have a right to veer off and go over the southerly of butter at the end there, they can do that, but we have no objection to them going over the improved road along with the other houses to get to Perry Hill Road. They can, they can go whichever way they choose.
There may, there, we may ask, I, I may request that there be a notation on the plan or some kind of document that supports that. So there's no question in the future.
I need to.
So, so my, my understanding is then, I mean, right now, in order for you to get to that lot, you have to maintain the whole 1,200 feet.
Yes.
They are gonna end up maintaining everything but the last 100 feet. So you're really gonna gain quite a bit out of this in terms of maintenance. And you will continue to have the right to maintain that last 100, 120-foot section between the end of what they're going to improve and your, your current cul-de-sac. That's the way I understand this. Okay.
But I, 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 they did give me the option to travel on the new road. We don't want to travel on the new road. I would.
And you don't have to. You don't have to.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's fine. You can travel on, you can travel on that ancient way from now until forever. As long as, as long as you and I are alive, you'll be able to continue to do that. If you don't wanna maintain that first section of the road, the ancient way to get to your lot and use the other section that they're responsible to maintain for, you'll be free to do that. That's the way I understand it. Okay.
Just one additional question. Are all four lots part of the association or just three?
All four.
Anybody else? For, against, pro, con, speak up. Now's the time. Gentlemen, you all set?
Okay, I would, I would make a motion that we continue the public hearing to our next monthly meeting and discuss with our planner.
What would we be preparing?
We're not gonna vote on this tonight.
Okay. I was just asking what I needed to get ready for, for our next meeting.
Well, we have to go through all the, we've got a bunch of stuff to do.
I mean, from, from what I see, everything's been pretty well addressed.
Okay.
You know, uh, the next meeting would be to ask for anything additional that we think is going to be required. I, I personally don't see that much. Maybe that, the document, uh, that goes along with it granting the rights for the Northerly landowner to use that initial improved section of roadway. I mean, even though that you don't want to use that, you know, maybe you sell the property and the next person says, "Hey, I'm tired of taking care of the, that other road, why do we need two roads?" And that document will make sure that, that Northerly landowner will be able to utilize all, the entire improved section of the road that they're proposing.
Everybody all set? Our next meeting will be October twenty-first. You can call Doug to get on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, he'll give you... Depends on how many people we have at that particular time. Everybody all set? No questions, everybody's happy? Thank you. Put your motion to go from public hearing back into the regular meeting.
I make a motion to go from a, of, public hearing to a regular meeting. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with that unanimous, we'll see you guys on the twenty-first of October. Thank you. With that continuing...
Uh, yeah, I'll take them, thank you. Yeah, I'll distribute the plans around.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
With that, we'll have a planner's update as soon as Doug comes, gets back out here.
Twenty, twenty-first, right, Mark? Twenty-first of October?
Correct, six thirty. Got that, Brian?
Yep.
Mark, do you mind passing me those plans?
Do you want this one?
Yes, please. Thank you. You don't need these other plans that they sent us, right?
No, I have multiple sets.
There are, trust me, only a piece of paper.
No, okay, I make multiple copies for you.
I've got one here.
Perfect.
With that, a planner's update, Doug?
Uh, okay, first things first, is Morton Lane. Uh, spoke with you a little bit about Mark. Uh, Jamie from Zenith Land Surveyors pretty much contacted me. I informed him that, uh, authority for stormwater has been transferred over to the Conservation Commission. He pretty much wanted the board's approval, um, to move forward with that and like the approval of the board to go forward to do stormwater with, um, Conservation Commission.
I'm trying Morton Lane, Morton Lane.
His roadway improvement.
That's the one where they're extending the road a little bit, right?
Yeah, yeah.
We pretty well solidified that, but he still has to go, well...
They, they just wanted to make sure they were good on our end of things. And I, to my knowledge, I believe they're, they're good on our end of things.
No, I always thought we, everything was answered.
I thought we put that one together.
Yes.
Yep, they just wanted it verbally stated that the board gives their...
Want it verbally or they want it written?
Verbally, they, that was the notion I got from our conversation.
I mean, certainly, we've had enough discussion about it, the planning board's certainly satisfied with the, with the improvements and would recommend, would recommend, I would make a motion that we, we state for the record that we are satisfied with the improvements shown for Morton Lane improvement and that the stormwater review board move forward with their review of the project. I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Uh, all right, next topic, the zoning bylaw, special residential development. We do have a Winter Town meeting coming up in January. They are looking to pass the zoning bylaw, I've been working on with Jim currently. We had a conversation about this. So pretty much it's going to be a special residential development, and I've been looking at areas to create overlay, overlay districts in the town. Uh, we went out to Rochester, and we looked at a few developments they have out there that are age-qualified. My recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, uh, up until this point, has been moving away from the age-qualified, leaving the option in the, in the bylaw itself, tie to go age-qualified or more inclusive housing. Uh, I've also looked at smart, smart growth options that other towns have done, and I've, I'm trying to compare what other, other towns' zoning bylaws are looking like right now to formulate the best one for Acushnette. Once I have solid language set in place, I'll present that to the board, I'm still working on that.
Still have to go to the public hearing, have to go to town meeting?
Absolutely.
Does Dartmouth have anything relative to that?
They do, yes, they do.
I mean, normally, that's not a bad place to start. I mean, they've got a very, a very, uh, very good planning.
Oh, their, their zoning bylaws are beautiful, yeah. No, I, I agree, I've actually been looking at Plymouth, Massachusetts. I don't know how familiar you are with the Pine Hills area out there?
I am.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I tend to go golfing out there, and they have one to two, maybe one to three unit condos.
Yep.
Uh, they're pretty densely congested, but it does preserve the open space of the land. They're beautiful homes.
It's almost like they made a mini-town.
Yes, yes.
They have their own stores, they got their own, everything going on. And, and, I mean, I, I would heartily recommend that you, uh, introduce yourself to whatever you see that looks promising. By all means, go out there, talk to their planner, you know, see how, see how it's worked out. See if there's anything about their bylaw that they would change, you know, it, it, that certainly, it would help in the refinement process, you know, to get back to what we're doing here. I do, I do have one thing I believe that I would like to see addressed in January. What we did find with our, our project, uh, for the convenience store is that the procedure between the planning board and the ZBA, uh, for the site plan approval and the ZBA's movement on the, the request for, uh, to have the facility there, it needs to be coordinated. The one that I remember in Canton, basically, it says that the, the planning board will, will vote on the special permit for the project with the advice of the planning board and the site plan approval process. So that forces the developer to deal with us first, then we hand over our findings to the zoning board of appeals, then they vote on it.
And zoning board will give their final?
Yeah, that way you don't have the zoning board of appeals voting on something before we finish our, before we finish our job here. It's just, it's more just a procedural thing. Uh, the, I mean, the one I remember is in Canton, or was in Canton. Uh, I'm sure there are other examples around here, but certainly the Canton zoning bylaw addresses it in a, a decent, well-thought-out fashion.
Okay, uh, there was another zoning bylaw I was going to look at, or not necessarily zoning bylaw, but, um, in terms of the way we're approaching solar projects and the requirements we have, I was, I haven't been able to dive deep into it yet, but I wanted to nail down specific language on what we're going to require for solar arrays moving forward. And then I, I discussed at the last meeting as well, having the requirement of a connection agreement with Eversource, whatever it may be.
Is anybody else doing that? I, I, I just, I don't mind doing it, but I, I've just not, I've not had the best luck dealing with Eversource on my little, on my little projects, forget about anything of that size.
Well, that way, they'd have to have a connection before they even started their...
I know, and, and, you know, it could take two or three years to get an interconnection.
But the, the permit we issue is only good for two years anyway.
I, I, I understand, um, in which case, they'd have, and we've had a couple of them that have had to come back because the time has run out.
True, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't mind doing it, but, you know, I, I, I'm just hesitant to put, to make it that difficult to get through the process.
Yeah, no.
That's just my own personal feeling. I, I would rather see solar arrays than subdivisions. I guess it's really the way, the way I kind of look at it.
Can we put a date on that, that, I mean, like, one year, six months?
For the...
The hookup from Eversource, give them a point when they come in, they have to have it.
The, the special, it's a special permit that we...
We issue.
Yeah, special permit, statutorily, is only good for a certain amount of time. I believe it's two years, I might, I might be wrong.
It's two years, and then, um...
For solar arrays.
It, it's two years unless the building inspector, uh, feels that the project is progressing sufficiently to keep the thing open. Uh, it's, it's very, it's very vague. It's made so that if you start a big project, like a big building or something like that, and it's not completed within two years, that you have the ability to say, you know, "I've been trying to get this building built, you know, I've got the foundations in, I've got the, the framework up, I've got it closed in, but there are some things to do inside." But it's normally a two-year, a two-year term.
I'll say Bleach for last, peer review services.
I would just ask, I would just ask to see if there are any other towns that are requiring that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do my due diligence and do some research into it.
If we, I just don't want to be in a position to the towns going to court, you know, with one of these proponents. You know, now we've got to spend money with, on legal fees for something that's, uh, I, I don't want to be the precedent setter, I guess, in the state of Massachusetts.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I completely understand.
I guess, I guess that's the short way of, of saying what I want to say.
Yeah, no, that's fair, that's fair, I completely agree with that. I'll, I'll look around and see what other, other towns are doing.
Yeah.
So the budget was approved for the clerk, they approved nineteen and a half hours. I'm still waiting to hear if it's set at twenty-one fifty an hour, or if, because, I, I believe it's going to become a union position, so that would change the pay scale. So once that gets done, I have to post it in-house for a week, and then it will be posted to the public after that week. And hopefully, we'll have somebody else in the office.
Is Grace's from the selectmen on this?
Uh, that the approval of...
The nineteen and a half hours?
Yes, yes, the reserve fund, uh, reserve fund transfer was issued. Uh, they also did a reserve fund transfer for office supply line, and then, um, some software for the computers and GIS stuff and, um, Adobe, so...
Good, great.
Yep, um, and then... Peer, peer review services, we, uh, Pat created RFQ for peer review services. We are waiting to hear back from the Board of Selectmen's office, but we haven't heard anything. So we might just end up moving forward with that, just to bring somebody else on board and get the process a little more streamlined. I don't know if you, you, either you're aware, I know Mark knows, I'm going to be, I get surgery next week on my knee, so I'll be working from home for a couple of weeks after that. And then, there is a...
Do it in between meetings.
And I'll be on crutches for six weeks, but we'll make it work. Yeah, we'll make it work.
Nice, good idea.
All right, so, I mean, this is not the best...
If it was my father, he'd be making sure you were there the day after the surgery. Doing something, so...
Oh, yeah, no, don't worry, I'll be, I'll be, I have a laptop already to go for at home, and it'll be connected to my computer here, my phone's connected to my cellphone, so we're in a good position. So they're looking to do something at Lake Street, I just wanted to run this by the board, show you guys what's going on. Pretty much, uh, they want to improve, well, not improve, maintain the parking lot in this area, maintain the gravel, gravel road in this area, uh, eliminate the grass strip in the middle, plant native vegetation. There's currently a concrete pad over here, remove the concrete pad. Place parking in the back over there, maintain the boat ramp. Uh, currently, as sits, there is a pile of boulders that is in the middle over here. Um, so what the plan is, to create a natural barrier between the roadway and park. Uh, so placing the boulders along the roadway, stacking them to create a stone wall.
That's how it used to be, though.
Yeah, but it would just make it, make it look nice, you give, give people a place to go, maintain this roadway, create a picnic area here, uh, some point down the line, uh, potential pergola pavilion in this area.
So why I said that about the concrete, uh, pad, that's where the old snack bar used to be for the beach. Really? That's right. Wow.
That's good to know, I'll have to go back and look, because we've been through...
Well, when I was a kid, the building was still there, and then one night, some kids were sleeping out, and we were sleeping out on the island, on my father's property, and they burnt it down. Oh, huh. You burnt it down, you said? Yeah. And it's actually, the old, um, where the bathrooms were, is right over here somewhere. Actually, the, uh, foundation is still there for, I just seen...
Do you mind, can you actually draw that out, where, where you believe it is?
I want to see, it's, you know, the driveway that goes out back.
Yeah, so that's actually right over here.
Oh, I'm sorry, right over here. So, it's probably like right in here, I think, if you look around enough, you're going to see the old foundation to the, the whole bathrooms.
Okay, I walked around here, uh, Wednesday, I came around, walked the whole site and took some pictures, so, let's get to know.
Yeah, I mean, I remember that so clearly.
Over there too, by the beach, is it that red thing?
This is going to be a boat, it's an already existing boat ramp, but it's maintaining it, so...
They have a fire...
Yeah, the fire thing is right, it's right here, right in there somewhere, yeah.
They use it to suck the water out of the, uh...
Oh, the lake, yep.
Okay, just make sure that that doesn't get messed up through the fire panel.
Yeah, I mean, we'll be working in conjunction with them and see what they want to, want to do moving forward.
They still don't own the, the land, though. They don't own the...
They don't own the water. And my understanding is that the, the property line goes to the high-water mark of the ponds.
Okay.
That's, I, I may be wrong, that's, that's always how, how I understood.
I was actually told it's like patchwork underneath the, um, underneath all the reservoirs. And the way it worked, I guess, back in early nineteen hundreds, they were, the penny store or something like that in New Bedford, they were selling portions of land.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I wasn't, informed about, so I found that really interesting. I know, as of right now, New Bedford owns it, they wanted to see a solid plan of what we were going to do moving forward. This is the best I could do with the software I had at the time, so...
Yeah, no, that's, that's... Yeah, I still don't know why they retained ownership of that, I, I...
Is that the city of New Bedford?
They, they still maintain the right to withdraw water from that reservoir. Right. I don't know that they'll ever use it, you know, I mean, especially considering what DEP requires for new, new sources of, of water.
Isn't there a conduit down there?
There's an aqueduct that leaves there from the pump house. But that aqueduct is actually, from what I heard, stories, is, it's actually collapsed in sections.
Yeah.
That's right. That wouldn't be too surprising, I mean, it's very... You're talking about something that's already a hundred years old.
That's right.
I do, I, I mean, when I...
It goes underground, away from the pump house.
When I was younger, you used to be able to hear the water flowing through the pump house to somewhere. Right, yeah.
All right.
No, right, you're right, because we used to camp there along the road that led to the pump house. We used to actually camp there with my family, so... Yeah. Oh, no, there's a, there's a lot of history, no, let me tell you. Well, I mean, and, I mean, not, not so much there, but that's what happened, uh, in and around the lakes in several areas with some of these old subdivisions. Uh, one of them, which is my favorite, that really has no legal access to the rest of the roadway system in town. But they were, they were basically cottage lots... Yeah. For people in New Bedford, you know, to go out there in the summer, you know, and... But they're still, there are still valid subdivisions out there that, uh, are small lots and... There used to be another house over here. Yeah. I mean, if you, if you go down Lake Street and you look past where the whites are, you'll see a house that's like way, way out there. Oh, yeah. That's one of those, that's the subdivision that, there's no legal... Legal, right. There's no legal right of access to that, to that lot. And those, those houses up there, and there are a few. I mean, they go through somebody else's property right now that owns the Cranberry lawn.
You guys all set with everything?
Yeah, yeah, I'm all...
I, I don't know if you guys happen to know, do you know any, who owns this roadway?
Sure, it belongs to Tabor, wasn't it?
Tabor, it used to belong to Tabor, but they sold it.
Did they?
Yeah, they did last year.
Yeah, they sold it. But whoever, I would think whoever owns the property now is still...
Yeah, because those houses are like... Yeah, 'cause those houses are like.
It's really just a right of way, though, it's not.
That's right.
I, I would, I would say that at the very least, regardless of any legal documents, uh, that whoever owns the land in the back has got the continued right to access.
Access that, correct.
Along, along here.
Okay, all right.
And, and.
Listen, we can discuss this later, let's, the camera, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Good.